Okay, I'm going to call the -- to order the meeting, the special meeting of the Planning Commission of 14 March 2019. Can I have a roll call, please?
Rodriguez.
President.
Newton.
Here.
Green.
Fragoso.
Here.
Kirline. Gonzalez Parber. And Chair Swift.
Here. And Commissioner Caroline is recusing herself, I believe, from this. So I'm going to read the meeting protocol. Oops, I'm sorry. I'm going to have approval of the agenda. And I noticed one thing, staff, we didn't have on the agenda was public time.
We were advised that for a special meeting, you're not required to have that.
But insofar as there are a number of people who would like to speak, there's no problem with opening it after the typical staff presentation, commission questions, and then, if you wish, open it up for public.
Clarification. Typically for special council meetings, special meetings, we don't have open time for items not on the agenda, but there's public comment on the items. That's just a matter of practice.
Okay, thank you. So approval of the agenda, do we want to change the agenda around at all?
Yeah, I would propose we move the minutes ahead of the cannabis discussion, just so we can -- hopefully Commissioner Green will be here by the time we start the discussion on the cannabis.
Do I have a second?
You'll have time to run it before I may ask.
Discussion?
A second.
That motion.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So I'm going to read the meeting protocol. The chair shall maintain order at the meetings in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, and the commission has the responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior in order to encourage community participation and citizen input at commission meetings. The commission and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motive of commission members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. So item number two, minutes from the February 21st, 2019 meeting. Any corrections?
I think we might, on page nine, note that when Commissioner Caroline left the meeting, it was because she was recusing herself from the cannabis discussion.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the minutes from the February 21st, 2019 meeting with the correction noted.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? So now we're going to go on to item one, discuss, consider local cannabis regulations, and provide direction to staff. And before we start with staff report, I'd like to make a couple of comments. I wanted to reiterate that the town's moratorium ends October 31st, and we need to finalize our work on this issue so that we get it to the council in time for them to do their work on it. So I'm hoping tonight that, by the end of the night, that we can have enough information that for the next meeting, we can have a draft for 17 and comments on chapter, Title V, so that we can, at the next meeting --
Next week?
No, the next meeting on this item, which is probably going to be in April, and perhaps a special meeting if we need to. But what I want to do is have this done in April, to have it back, so that we can have it to the council in May for their May meeting.
Yes, that's correct. We are tentatively scheduling it for their May 1st meeting.
And I think our voting standard, when we do get to recommending an amendment, is different than our normal voting standard for normal planning commission business. So to recommend changes or an amendment to the town code, we would need to have two-thirds vote, which is five ayes, ayes. So I think as we move along this process, I think we're all going to need to, you know, we all have divergent opinions on this, and I think we're all going to need to look at coming together and perhaps compromising on some of the issues so that we can move this forward. So I just wanted to put that out there.
And furthermore, to that point about needing five planning commissioners, insofar as, for example, Commissioner Gonzalez has indicated she wouldn't be able to attend tonight. Commissioner Curling has recused herself, and I'll wait for Commissioner Green to show up and state for sure, but he has previously indicated he may not be able to attend the regular meeting in April. So that really puts the onus on all the commissioners to be there in order to make that recommendation in a timely manner. So we will be confirming ahead of time your availability, and please respond back and stay healthy.
So my approach for tonight is to get staff report, get public comments, and then when it comes back to us, that we start looking at this with the cultivation aspect, then the rest of Title 17, and then going on to Title V with the business permit piece. So that's my thinking on this as far as moving forward. So with that, staff?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Nobody can assert that the town hasn't been thorough in its review of these regulations. I think we're on our 13th meeting on this, as recently as the February meeting. The planning commission was looking at at least a staff presentation on the ordinances themselves, as well as some limited discussion about that. As noted by the chair, the town council would like to get this in draft ordinance form to them in May, which kind of puts the onus on this commission both tonight, and if necessary, either at a special meeting or in a wrapping-up meeting with ordinances recommended for adoption to the town council. Get that ready in April. So that's why we're meeting early, and hopefully we can get through the entirety of these proposed regulations. So our objectives tonight are pretty straightforward. Excuse me. The first is to review the draft code revisions, and I'm sure your commission has noted that staff has continued to work on those codes in their interim since the last meeting, and to provide direction to staff on ordinances, issues, and options. As you will note, in areas where we didn't feel that there was commission direction at one of our previous meetings, we have listed options for your commission's consideration. So our hope is that we can boil it down to as limited a range of options as possible and move forward. In response to suggestions and comments at the last meeting, one of the changes that we have made is that we are no longer keeping the personal cannabis cultivation in a separate chapter. Currently, that's contained in Chapter 17.138, dealing with medical cannabis cultivation. And what we are simply doing now is proposing that the, in Chapter 17.110, be entitled cannabis uses, and that it include the personal cannabis cultivation section, and we'll get to that in the discussion of that. The other code chapter is Chapter 5-56, commercial cannabis business permits. And consistent with the format that we used at our last meeting, I will be making the presentation, boy, frog in my throat tonight, on the Chapter 17.110, i.e. zoning code provisions, and Assistant Attorney Amanda Sharn will be presenting on Chapter 5-56. So jumping into Chapter 17-110, and we're just kind of skimming the highlights, obviously having read that, we're not, we don't need to spend a lot of time. We'd like to reserve the majority of the time for your commission's discussion and direction, and for the public comments, such as they may be. So from a highlight standpoint, looking at definitions, we obviously have a number of specific definitions. One of the key questions there is how to define youth centers. And what we have listed are specific clarifying examples of what can or cannot be, or could or could not be included in that definition of youth center. Youth center, of course, being one of the three designations or types of youth uses, along with schools and daycare centers, that barring local ordinance adoption, would default to the state's 600-foot buffer setback from any cannabis business use. So again, we're just looking at, continuing to fine-tune our local definitions with an eye towards getting the best fit for Fairfax. Another portion of that chapter deals with commercial cannabis prohibited uses, unless they're specifically allowed, and this is important because what we're saying right now is these are the uses that we're considering at this time. It's not to necessarily preclude further consideration. For example, we have spent time deliberating on micro businesses, i.e. vertically integrated cannabis businesses. So with time, we may, with the commissioner council's direction, come back to consideration of that. But right now, we are simply focusing on a very limited range of both commercial and personal cannabis-related activities. In 17.110-040, the cannabis retail uses list development standards for those uses. And so this gets into the details that staff is requesting commission direction on pertaining to both storefronts and delivery-only operations. It's noted that, as currently proposed and currently set up in our zoning ordinance, you could only have retail in the CH and CC zone, and we're recommending that the storefront uses and delivery, i.e. commercial businesses, only be included in those locations. For, excuse me, let me clarify that. For the delivery-only, we would also allow that in the CL zone. So for the CH, CC, and CL zones, all commercial zones, they would also potentially allow delivery-only businesses. The other aspects of commercial cannabis regulations is a 1,500-square-foot size limit. That would exclude restrooms and common areas, because typically those are ancillary uses to a business. But there hasn't been much discussion or controversy over retaining a 1,500-square-foot limit, consistent with the medical marijuana regulations in effect now. With the parking, with the parking, our proposal is to use a retail standard for storefront-only businesses, with the possibility of including a quasi-industrial standard for delivery-only, and possibly providing an additional parking space for delivery vehicles if there's a The slide up here indicates the very limited areas available in Fairfax. If we are considering the state's default 600-foot buffers, the areas highlighted in red are currently defined as youth-serving uses under the state's default regulations. And so what we've done is draw in blue the 600-foot circle around each one of those, whether it's a Montessori school with a kindergarten, or a school, a regular school with a playground, or a youth center, such as straight down the street here on Park. And so we're, there's a limited area to the east of the downtown area that extends to approximately the Pastore and Willow Avenue area. And beyond that, under the current state defaults, no other area would be available for those uses. Commercial cannabis uses, retail uses, we're proposing specific development standards, and the specific ones, as mentioned, are the 600-foot for the school, daycare, and youth center. And the question is, should we relax, perhaps, some of those setbacks for a delivery-only business, recognizing that you're not going to have activity or public access to those type of business? So the, is it necessary to have a full 600-foot buffer with a very limited public presence for those? Another question is, does your commission wish to consider exceptions under certain prescribed circumstances for businesses that may have a location, or locations that may reach certain criteria? For example, natural barriers, lack of youth activities in the vicinity. And again, we could prescribe a distance if your commission feels comfortable with that. But that's one of the questions, is do we start to do carve-outs where we allow certain type of businesses, or businesses under very specific circumstances, to encroach into the state's buffer zones? It's also noted that this is not an unusual practice in certain other jurisdictions that do have cannabis businesses, where they feel that it simply doesn't represent the impact to youths, that certain other businesses or activities might. Another aspect has to do with the number of businesses, and your commission has reviewed this at length. We recognize that there is a wide range of opinions on this topic. We believe that the commission has more or less boiled it down to some number between one and three businesses. One of the questions there is, do we use an address basis? In other words, do we simply say that a cannabis business within the range of potentially allowable businesses, i.e. medical retail, adult recreation retail, or delivery, could be allowed at that address, and then limit the total number of addresses? Or do we want to put a cap within each type of business? So within those three categories of commercial use, do we want to say, for example, that there can be only one delivery business? Although the state, under their default regulations, does allow delivery as an activity accessory to a typical storefront retail, whether medical or recreation, the town, if it so decides, can further limit that by saying that, for example, you can have a retail business, but you can't have delivery. So those are some of the deliberations and direction we would like your commission to reach tonight. And another question comes down to the existing medical marijuana dispensary. It's actually a medical marijuana dispensary with a pending side-by-side recreational delivery-only business. And so the question is, when we reach a certain number, how do we factor in the existing business? And so that obviously should be part of the point, the total number that the commission makes recommendations on. Personal cannabis cultivation. At the recommendation of the commission chair and staff shares, the chair's position on this, in the interest of simplicity and clarity, we are proposing to move the cannabis cultivation that was previously in a separate chapter into this chapter. This allows somebody who's looking up cannabis in a town code and may not be intimately familiar with how to flip back and forth between different chapters to find all those The questions that have arisen in regards to personal cannabis cultivation have to do with how many plants should be allowed per parcel. And the majority consensus of the commission previously was to allow six plants outdoors per lot. One of the questions has to do with padios on multifamily addresses. It's noted by staff that none of the multifamily managers or owners have indicated a desire to allow any cultivation on their properties. So the question would be, do we really want to spend a lot of time defining balconies and visibility from a public street, or simply say that it's required under the same provisions that we currently have for single-family residential, et cetera, and let managers address any other detail? So it would have to be not visible from off-site, for example, recognizing that it's unlikely that they would be growing them in those facilities anyway. Another option has to do with, our question has to do with indoor cultivation and the need to have those being kept in a locked space. Under state law, you are allowed to assume that the front door, and exterior doors, which of course feature locks, would be sufficient. The question would be, does your commission want to further specify that there'd be a locked room within that residence? So that's one of the items that we would like to get your commission's direction on. In terms of medical marijuana, the code currently allows up to 18 plants for, under a medical marijuana administrative exception. It's noted that nobody has ever approached the town in the several years that this exception has been in place to apply for such an exception. So we feel that, in general, it's probably not necessary to have that, but that certainly is an option. And then the question would be, if there were additional plants, how many plants should that be? It's further noted that, insofar as the state has, in their regulations, allowed six plants for indoor cultivation, regardless of any local regulations, and that your growing seasons for outdoor typically end sometime in the fall, it's entirely possible for somebody who wishes to cultivate year-round to have the six outdoor plants in the summer, and to switch over to six indoor plants in the winter. So that's probably a pretty healthy number for any household. And it's noted that, another question would be, in terms of outdoor cultivation, is currently there's a band within 200 feet of any daycare center or school. And so the question is, is there, are there provisions under which we might consider allowing a reduction in that? So that's another issue that staff is requesting commission direction on. So in summary, in terms of the Chapter 17.110 key policy questions, the first that we would like your commission to provide direction on has to do with youth centers. We would also request your commission to confirm which zones, what uses are allowed in, within the CC, CH, and CL breakouts. We would like your commission's direction on any difference in buffers pertaining to storefront versus delivery-only, the 600-foot state default buffer, or some local ordinance to that effect differing on that. And then another item, and an important one, is to decide on the number of businesses, whether this would be a cumulative cap or separate carve-outs for medical-only and delivery-only businesses. We would like commission direction on parking standards. We would like your direction in terms of personal cannabis cultivation, in terms of a six-plant limit, multifamily growing, exceptions to the six-plant limit for medical and the 200-foot buffer. And we would also request that you clarify on the lock space requirement for indoor cultivation, whether a locked front door is adequate. And with that, I will turn it over to Attorney Sharn for her discussion on the remainder.
Good evening, Chair Swift, members of the Planning Commission. I'll keep my presentation brief, because I know you have a lot to discuss tonight. But, so after following the last hearing, we, I filled in a lot of the details, listened to the feedback from the commission. So we've got a revised Chapter 5.56 to govern the commercial cannabis business permits. You'll see, we've added back, added in the details surrounding purpose, definitions, the prohibit, just kind of the form and format of the regulations, how revocation would work, the term of the permits. So all that detail has been added in. One thing I wanted to flag to you all is that, because there was some question about the background check issue, that we did list in Section 5.56080, the minimum criteria for the issuance of the permit, which would include the disqualifying convictions list. But, so if there's more questions on that, we can come back to them. I did want to just highlight, we did make some changes to the permit application process. So, let's see. We'll have, because what the commission has talked about in the past was that we would have a limited number of permits, and because we don't want necessarily, you know, race to the, race to the permit application office, we would have an app, a set applicant, the town would establish an application period during which it would give applicants however long to get their application materials ready and come submit to the town by a set deadline. And then town staff would review the applications for completeness, make sure that all the objective town criteria are met, ensure that all required permit application materials have been submitted, and then, oh, and then also we, per Commissioner Green's comments, moved the background check to the, to that kind of pre-screening process. And then once all the application materials are complete and pre-screening is approved, then the first step would be to, the next step would be to come to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission would do their scoring process of all the applications. There would be a public hearing. The scoring would be merit-based, based on criteria that will be determined in the future, and we look for your input on that scoring process, on those scoring criteria. And then after the Planning Commission makes its scoring recommendation, the applications would then go to the town council, who would make a final decision on the scores, and there would probably be an additional scoring element based on the town council's, excuse me, the presentation by the applicants to the town council. Another change I wanted to highlight for you all is that, in, one of the comments that Chair Swift had on the previous draft was that it didn't really, it didn't sit well, the, the process, because we're requiring all the zoning approvals to be, discretionary zoning approvals to be approved concurrently with the commercial cannabis business permit, so it made it kind of confusing based on who's the scoring So it made it kind of confusing based on who's the scoring body, who would also have the final say about the design review, traffic impact permits, assigned permits, and what have you. So the way this draft is intending to deal with that is to say that the Planning Commission will review all those permits and make a recommendation, and then the town council would issue the final decision on those as well. So that's the, the highlights. And I'll, please ask staff or myself if there's any questions, and we're happy to go over it in more detail. Thank you.
Does anyone on my left have questions for staff regarding the staff report this time?
Not at this time, thank you.
Commissioners on my right have questions for staff?
I do. I think I have, my first question has to do with, have we heard from the fire department or police on this draft? What is their feedback?
We have not heard, had any feedback at any point in the discussion from either fire nor police.
I'd love to just see this reviewed earlier than later, so that we don't get too far down the road proposing something that they, in their wisdom and expertise, don't have an opportunity to give feedback. The second question that I have is...
May I add to that?
Sure.
Okay. I have had a conversation with the police chief. He understands the general direction and doesn't have any particular comments on it. The only thing that was of concern to him, I think I brought up last time, is about the background checks and how many might be required for them to do.
Thank you. The next question I have has to do with the cottage, well, I'll bring that up when we get to that section. One comment we heard from the public had to do with, if we merged these ordinances together, there was going to be a portion of the old ordinance that was going to be lost that they thought was valuable. So to, in this merger, will this leave the remainder portions of that ordinance intact in the, in the original number, or what's happening with the old information?
Are you talking about this ordinance, or are you talking about the telecom ordinance?
17-138 is our current medical cannabis cultivation ordinance.
I might be talking about telecom.
Yeah, because there's a big debate right now about 19, about, the old Section 19 versus the new Section 19. There's a big debate going on about that.
Okay, I'm mixing them up then, thank you. And then my final question has to do with, the city of San Rafael was in the news this week for approving an ordinance. Is it this ordinance? And can you just tell me generally, what did they approve?
Yes, I've actually been in contact with the person who's administering their program. What the city of San Rafael has done is to somewhat expand their program to allow delivery. It was previously, there are three categories of uses, none of which pertain to retail storefronts, by the way. And they would open that up to allow for a delivery type of businesses. So they're not considering retail at this time. The actions that the, their council took do not allow for that, but they do allow for the delivery option.
I have a couple more questions. Sort of to follow up on the question you thought you were asking, it didn't. By moving the current medical cannabis cultivation requirements into 17-110, am I correct that that's sort of what's brought about a combination of some of these definitions from both the Business and Professions Code and the Health and Safety Code, and kind of trying to be as inclusive as possible? I mean, in some places, it looks like the Business and Professions Code refers to the Health and Safety Code definitions, but in other places, like with the definitions of school, I'm a little confused. It seems as if by combining the two definitions, we're changing some of the, of the meaning of the state definitions.
Really good question. So yeah, kind of, I included the attachment with the explanation of detail breaking down each definition, but you're correct, well, okay, sorry, slow down. There's, for the personal cultivation definitions, they are all carried forward to be the same as they are under the personal, under chapter, from Chapter 17-138 to the new chapter. With the exception, though, what you might be thinking about is the buffer, the difference between, for the 200-foot buffer. So under the current reg, it's, there's a 200-foot buffer around preschools, public and private preschools, elementary schools and middle schools, I believe. And as I rolled it forward into the new one, I just used the new state definitions because it would include all of those things. But it would probably, it would also be more inclusive, right? Because of daycare, the definition of daycare center is more expansive than just preschool. And then the definition of school, it would include high schools, not that there are any high schools in Fairfax, I believe, right? Everyone goes Drake's in San Anselmo. So elementary schools, so there shouldn't be any difference with schools, but the, the main difference would be surrounding daycares versus preschool in terms of how the buffer works.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood that it was really because we're sort of taking these two different programs, one under Business and Professions and one under Health and Safety, and trying to both, put both of them into one chapter of our ordinance, right?
Correct, yeah. As we were, as I was kind of sewing them together, that was one of the changes.
Okay, another question I had related to another definition, and it comes up, let me find it here, in the memo, in a couple different places. On the second page of the memo, there's a discussion of cannabis cultivation. And it includes, for the purposes of commercial cannabis cultivation, processing, rolling, storing, packaging, and labeling of something called, quote-unquote, "non-manufactured cannabis products," end quote. A little later on, we come to another definition of cannabis manufacturing, which again refers in the first sentence to all these different parts preparing or packaging a, quote-unquote, cannabis product. And on the next page, we have a definition of cannabis product, which is really limited to cannabis that's undergone a process whereby the plant material has been transformed into a concentrate. And, and, and so it doesn't seem to include the, quote-unquote, cannabis cultivator, quote, rolling, storing, packaging, and labeling a non-manufactured cannabis product, if I understand that correctly. Is that correct?
So the concept of a non-manufactured cannabis product comes from the Cal Cannabis Licensing Program regulations. And so for purposes of having the broadest definition of commercial cultivation possible, that's why that clause has been included in there, in, excuse me, included in the definition of cannabis cultivation. But following through, I, I can go back and double-check that cannabis, non-manufactured cannabis products would fall within the definition of cannabis products. I think at, by default, I would say it is because cannabis product is stated to have the same meaning as it does under the Business and Professions Code. So that's kind of a catch-all.
Well, all right, I'm going to have to go back and look at the Business and Professions Code, because in my view, this definition, if it comes from the Health and Safety Code, is focused on something that's undergone a process for concentrate. We can talk about this a little bit when we get into the discussion part. I don't want to veer off questions, because I still have a few more. So we'll get back to that one. I just wanted to make sure that I was reading it correctly and I hadn't missed something. Could you clarify a little bit, or could somebody clarify a little bit, the signage issue? There's a statement about not retaining the six square feet for the medical dispensary limit. Is that a square footage limit for signs?
Yes, currently in the medical chapter, a business is limited to six square feet. I think the intention there was to maximize the discretion. So that would expand out to the town's sign chapter allowances, which would be more permissive.
We're talking about the size of the sign?
Correct.
We're not talking about the distance from the business, right? We're talking about the physical size of the sign. And so that raises a question, which I think I have for quite a few of these things, which is, what are the limits? You're talking about removing a limit on medicinal dispensaries that doesn't apply to other businesses. And not including a size limit to make the marijuana, the cannabis business sign requirements the same as we have for other businesses in town? Is that the way I understand it?
Yes.
And is that not true then, for the size limit on the square foot? Is that a different issue? Because I was wondering if we have size limits on other businesses similar to this.
Yeah, so the sign ordinance allows each business to have two signs, as long as one is a project, no, non-cannabis-related businesses are allowed to have two signs as long as one is a projecting sign. And the total square footage of both signs can be one square foot for each one foot of the business building frontage.
I'm going to interrupt you. I don't think you understand my question. And I, and it's difficult, because sign and size are such similar words. So my question is, we have a square footage requirement, and we're talking about a 1,500-square-foot limit on this physical square footage of a business as a cannabis retail business. And so what I'm wondering is, do other businesses in town have a square footage limit? Or would this be a special, special requirement, because we love cannabis businesses so much?
It's, it's particular to cannabis businesses.
And, and the parking, I have a similar question. Are some of these proposals that we're talking about extra and special?
No, the parking is actually, what our proposal is just to match the town's requirements. Oh, that's right. With, with the potential exception for delivery, recognizing that if you have a delivery business, you're going to have a vehicle. And so the idea is to say, let's, does the commission want to require an additional parking space in addition to the typical parking requirements for that delivery vehicle?
And we don't have special delivery business requirements for non-cannabis businesses that deliver in town, is what I'm asking.
We'll look that up and respond back.
And then, in terms of limiting the six plants per lot regardless of how many residential units are on the lot, how are we justifying that with respect to state law that would purportedly allow per residents?
Each residence would allow, would be allowed to have six plants indoors. The per-lot cap only applies to outdoor cultivation.
And the reason that would be acceptable under the state law is because it's not specifically addressed under state law? I'm trying to understand.
State law only, state law allows the, us, local jurisdiction to completely ban outdoor cultivation, so it's...
So this would not be, if we didn't say anything, if we said we would adopt the same requirements the state does with respect to outdoor, the six plants per residence limit would apply for, for outdoor, right? Would apply for each residence? I'm, I am still confused.
Yeah, the, the state is silent on that. The, the commission has previously, I think, on at least two meetings, discussed the plant limit. And one of the commissioners who wasn't here opined that six plants was plenty. But if your commission, in your deliberations, which is, wishes to explore that, but there was a, definitely a majority consensus expressed at a prior meeting or meetings to that six-plant limit. So that was...
Okay, I'm not trying to debate the worthiness. I'm just trying to get an answer about, because from my perspective, there's always been a constitutional question. So I'm trying to get an answer, because I see there being a slight difference between our process if we allow for exceptions and variances, so that those with medical needs can come to us and seek an exception versus an outright ban. But maybe we'll get to, or an outright limit that doesn't allow for a variance. And I see a difference in terms of the rights of patients. So that's what I'm concerned about here. And I'll get to my last few questions, which have to do with the, I thought we were going to see some scoring criteria tonight on the application process?
Yes, staff discussed the possibility of presenting the criteria. What we have done is simply outline it in general, in broad terms. And because we feel that the commission, it would be useful for the commission to focus on the other items. Furthermore, insofar as in our discussions, we recognize that the criteria is probably going to be a fluid and much discussed topic. Our recommendation at this time is to not include that in the ordinances themselves, but rather to have that adopted by resolution, and that would allow for maximum flexibility. It would also enable your commission to go forward with a recommendation on the ordinances without having to worry about the criteria. When we did discuss some of the scoring criteria, we were using items such as experience and qualifications, business and operating plans, education program, community benefits, and local enterprise aspects. And so if your commission has particular comments in that regard, we would be happy to discuss those. And if you so direct, we can come back, or we anticipate we will be coming back with a draft set of criteria for a commission's consideration at the next meeting.
Okay, and, and this question pertains to the background check and the items that are being checked for, is that derived from state law requirements, or is that something we're creating?
It's something that we're creating, I think these were patterned off the requirements that the County of Marin used.
And there doesn't seem to be any, just, I mean, okay, we'll get into the, the substance later. I think those are all my questions. Thanks.
Okay, can I just comment that Commissioner Green, 7:00, and for the secretary, Commissioner Green has arrived. I'm going to go ahead and ask my questions and give you a chance to...
Catch up, thank you.
Catch up. We're asking questions of staff on the staff report. So I had three questions. Page six of the staff report relating to cultivation and buffers, the bottom paragraph, I'm just trying to get clarification. And it's talking about what you already commented on, the definition of public, private school, preschool, elementary, or middle school. There's a statement in there that says, "This definition would appear to include preschools within a home for consistency with the updated definitions." This provision has been carried forward. And I'm just trying to understand, because we have definitions in there about daycare and schools, so when we talk buffers, are we basically taught for cultivation, or are we basically using the daycare definition that's in there and the school definition which omit, like, private home daycares and private? I just want to be clear on that.
Correct. So we've now, we're using the new definition of daycare center for the 200-foot buffer, not the old definition of preschool.
My second question, we don't address in the staff report, but I noted, you know, we're adding new things as we work on this. So I noted there's new sections in 17-110 that we haven't seen before. I think on page six, specifically 17-110-040C 4 to 6, which deals...
Is there a good section, is that again?
Page six of the, page six of the draft, 4 through 6. Page six of the, page six of the draft, 4 through 6. So it's talking, and I think it's probably related somewhat to the business permit process. It talks about the signage, so we've gone, we've changed signage to fit what we have for other businesses, which we already talked about. And it talks about traffic impact permit. And in there, it says, "If an application for proposed cannabis retailer requires a traffic impact permit, then notwithstanding a provision of the traffic impact permit chapter, to the contrary, the town council shall not be required to approve the methodology used in the traffic study." Can you just address that a little bit? And then the other part of that was, and you kind of addressed it in the business process, where you foresee this as normally things that would come to the planning commission for decision, such as discretionary permits. We, under this process, with a business permit, you would only see us making recommendations on those as the business permit section says that they may be done together or separately. So can you talk to the traffic impact and the town council ability to alter that?
Yes. Relating to the traffic impact permit, those are currently contained in Chapter 17-056. And that's a three-part analysis where, once a preliminary determination is made by staff that a traffic impact permit may be required or is required, and we do that through consultation with our town engineer. Under the current provisions, it goes to the council for approval of methodology. And typically, this may consist of identifying intersections for study and things like that. So there's a first analysis that has to go to the council. Then it goes back to the planning commission concurrent with any other applications, which typically there are one or more on these commercial enterprises that the commission does review. And then the town council is assigned responsibility for a final decision on a traffic impact permit. So there's basically kind of an up-down process in the current codes. Recognizing that what we're trying to do is assemble applicants and process them all through, the challenge is that you're talking about a minimum of a four-to-six-month process if you retain the current requirement for the town council to just look at the methodology for the TIP. So what we're saying here is because it's a side-by-side process with a number of applicants likely, and in the interest of not taking a half a year to do these applications, the idea is to have staff do the initial screening for the methodology and then take that traffic impact permit to the planning commission with the other applications. To the subject of the normally planning commission-reviewed applications, design review, for example, or signage, the idea there is that those elements are integral to the overall review of these proposed businesses. For example, the design, the signage. That could have to do with criteria we develop in terms of fit with the town or discreteness. So given that those are wrapped up in an overall decision on businesses, that the town council would be the appropriate deciding body for all of them. So the planning commission is still going to get the ability to look at that and make recommendations, but those would all go as part of the package that would be forwarded to the town council should the applications meet the minimum qualifying threshold necessary for consideration for final approval by the town council.
Okay, my last question goes to process on the Title V section. So in the body of this, you've asked for input from the planning commission on Title V. So when we look at recommending amendments to Title 17, we're going to take that, use that voting, different voting standard. What's the expectation as we look at Title V, as far as what you see coming from us, the planning commission? Are we looking at just providing input, or are you looking at the recommended voting standard for recommended, recommending amendments to the code? I mean, you're just asking for input from us for that? Does that make sense?
Yes, consistent with what we believe is prior commission recommendations, insofar as we're looking at totality of regulations here, whether they're in the zoning chapter or in the business chapter, we felt that it would be most useful for the commission to be able to review that at the same time. Obviously, it's not a zoning chapter or zoning regulation, so that the decision on that, in any event, is going to be made by the council. But we feel it's useful for the commission to be able to look at the totality of those regulations and, if necessary, recommend adjustments.
Okay, those are all the questions that I have. Phil, did you have any questions for staff on the staff report before we open it to public comment? If you had a chance to settle?
I had no specific questions on the staff report. I have tons of, so actually, my question was similar to your last one, that you just answered, I think, is what you're expecting tonight. So I have like tons of little red lines and changes to language in this amazing attempt, pressed-a-digitation here of future ordinance that we're just about to do. I think it's amazing what was done here, actually, and the definitional culling down and all that. So that's the overall question, is what do you expect tonight?
So, and maybe I can address that a little bit, since you missed the beginning part of that. So we had talked at the last meeting about having to do our work in a timely fashion so we could get it to the council, ideally by their May 1 meeting, so they would have recommended amendment to Title 17 in our input for the business process. So what I'm hoping we do tonight is, after public comment, we look at cultivation, then Title 17, then the business permit process, and we collect, take a straw vote, whatever, on each of the policy items we still need to address. And that is enough information for staff to bring back kind of a final draft at whatever next meeting we determine we're going to finish this up, knowing that with our voting standard for recommending amendments to Title 17, we have to have two-thirds yes votes, so five of us need to do that. And knowing that we're all going to need to look at this with some ability to come together and compromise on some of these things. So that's kind of where I'm hoping we finish up tonight, is having enough so we can get a final draft back. I know, it's unique right now. So that was kind of where I was hoping we would go tonight.
Okay, thanks. Just for the record, I was late tonight by an hour, but I have thoroughly studied this draft and we're ready to discuss it.
So if there's no other questions from the commission for staff, I'll open it up to public comment. And time limit is, maybe I'll ask this question. How many individuals wish to speak tonight?
I assume everybody here.
Okay, so we'll go with three minutes.
Lou Tremaine, 1790 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard here in Fairfax, representing Marin Alliance. I have a packet of information that I'm going to give to, I suppose, Linda, because I think she's the clerk tonight. It is a packet of information that describes an opportunity that came up for communities that have decided what they're going to do with the cannabis industry. Fairfax obviously isn't there yet, and Fairfax isn't going to be able to take advantage of this particular opportunity. However, this is what I believe is the first of several opportunities that will present themselves in terms of funding for communities that want to foster a cannabis industry. And I've been encouraging the town all along to do that, to foster a cannabis industry. This is a $10 million grant, not that $10 million would come to Fairfax because it's statewide, but it's a $10 million grant program that seeks to assist in the establishment of licensed businesses in communities. And I provide this to Linda so that she will share it with both you guys for your next meeting when you come to decision point, and with the town council as they come to decision point. The interesting thing about this particular grant program, and I have included the text of the enabling legislation from the state senate, is that it seeks reparations, I guess you would say, for people who were adversely impacted by the prohibition of cannabis in the first place. And its main goal in this particular opportunity would be to help people who had been put in jail, who had accrued criminal records, who had had probation, and who are having trouble getting jobs as a result of their involvement with the cannabis industry. As I've said before, Fairfax has a cannabis industry. I am sure that there are people in this community who fall into that category. They only gave one month for people to respond, or for communities to respond to this particular thing, which indicates to me that they're not going to spend $10 million and that this is going to come back around, and that there will be an opportunity. I don't think that it particularly helps Marin Alliance because it's for startups. I don't think we qualify for that, although we could probably stretch that argument. However, I offer this packet of information to the town so that they can see the opportunities that embracing a cannabis industry could bring to the town of Fairfax. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Tremaine, I just have a question on this draft business permit section and the renewal term being annual and the minimum criteria for the permit and the offenses section. Do you have any comment on either of those sections?
From the packet?
The draft ordinance in front of us says that the terms of these permits are annual, and they have to be renewed annually. And then the other is that to get a renewal, you'll have to meet certain minimum criteria, and some of them relate to this topic that you're bringing up about employees, managers, or owners having certain offenses and whether they could, if they have those offenses, then they would not be able to get their renewal. Did you have, do you have any feedback on those?
None of that applies to us. Yes, the renewal is annual. I'm really hoping that under Gavin Newsom's leadership, the fees for those renewals come down because it's onerous, especially for a medicinal operation. But I think that this particular packet of information seeks to mitigate that. I think the legislature understood that there are people that were harmed by the prohibition and that those people need a hand up. And so I think that this is the beginning steps of the state trying to make that happen, trying to give people who had been damaged personally, professionally, by their involvement in what was an underground cannabis industry. Although I will point out that many of the people who were involved in the cannabis industry, and who were involved in the cannabis industry in this community, were operating under collective law, collective being a group of people coming together to provide medicine for their community. And they were immune from a lot of persecution as a result of operating under collective law. Collective law has been taken away. There is legislation pending to bring it back, to bring compassionate actions by dispensaries back. So I think that the state is seeing the error in its ways and is attempting, at least at the legislative level, and hopefully at the governor's level, to make, you know, to make mitigations.
Thank you, Lou.
Good evening, friends. Lynette Shaw from the Marin Alliance. And I wanted to thank the planning commission for trying to move forward with this. I've got a little report that we, when you kindly allowed a recreational delivery license for my medical-only dispensary, the state has never heard of this configuration. We're the only one in the state to have a medical dispensary storefront with a recreational delivery-only license. So this has caused a lot of red tape to occur, and to say the least. And now they're going to make us build a glorified soji wall through the middle of my tiny dispensary in order to have two doors to separate the two businesses, which takes about $7,000 worth of approvals to approve. So I'm urging you to make this a simple process as we move forward and not try to make it more complex or more unusual, though I do like being unique, because it's been very complicated and the BCC has been very unyielding and hard to deal with. And so I'm hoping you can make this process more simple and not more complex because we're having a heck of a time with the BCC. And they've actually messed up so badly that because they've licensed so few marijuana gardens in the state of California, it looks like we're going to run out of licensed marijuana by the end of April statewide, which would throw us into a medical crisis. So, I mean, I realize that 90% of the marijuana buyers are recreational, they've sucked up all the licensed marijuana statewide, but we're looking at a medical patient crisis at the end of April, which I'm trying to mitigate with my legal team, of course, who beat the feds after 19 years. I have a pretty strong legal team to go maybe address this situation because we're looking at a medical crisis statewide. So the rules have been excessive from the state, and I urge you to try to smooth things out, make it easier, because this is a cannabis community. We have a long history here in the community, I have a lot of support in the community. And I know that you have tried to be conscientious about this, and I appreciate that. But I'm still dealing with red tape at the state. And also for licensing for new businesses, it's taken about eight months for the BCC to actually issue the second license. We've been in process for four months now. We've been in process for four months now, and we're still dealing with it. So I'm just letting you know, as my little report to everyone, how difficult and unfair the state has been to us all. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name's Jasmine Garrity. I've been at all of the past Planning Commission meetings. Nice to see you again. Thanks again for everybody who's here, and for everybody really caring about this issue to take the time to really go in-depth and look into the bits and pieces of what this is gonna look like for the town of Fairfax. So I wanted to start off by just saying that, so we, if we do pass for having a recreational storefront, we will be the first city in all of Marin County to pass that law. We have already talked about delivery, and that's definitely a very great method of going forward. Medical cannabis is really important to patients, and that's something that we should definitely remember. But as far as putting storefronts in our town, we really have to be very careful with what that's gonna do to our community. When we're looking at recreational storefronts, we really need to think about the community as a whole, and that how it's gonna alter that specifically. I would just like to point out a couple things. Drake High School has the highest marijuana use in Marin County. Forty-seven percent of 11th graders have reported using cannabis in the past 30 days. That's almost half of 11th graders who have reported using cannabis. So when we think about moving forward with these ordinances and policies, it's really important to think about the regulations. With all these people in the audience who are here to start these businesses and moving forward, it's not really about them. They're gonna have a great business, they're gonna be able to manage it and run it properly, and follow the rules and laws of the regulations that are put forward. It's about the products that are going into these stores. The products have really high THC potency levels, and they're very alarming for us when we're moving forward. Now people are using cannabis oil vaporizers and dab pens. So those are really high THC potency levels, and they can be up to 97% THC when you're looking at concentrates and waxes. So when we're thinking about these things, putting the regulations on specific products will be really important. When we're thinking about these products specifically, think about the companies behind these products. So like I mentioned at one of the past meetings, Altria, which is Philip Morris, just put $1.3 billion into the cannabis market. They have a huge investment in this, and that's their goal. When we look at Corona, for example, Constellation Incorporated, they own a huge patent on creating marijuana beverages. They are going to be running this market. It's not the mom-and-pop shop thing that we're looking at with these products in the stores. It's the people hiding in the background who are actually creating these really high potency products and putting them through these stores. So if we can look into regulations specifically about the products going into these stores, I think that would be really important, especially looking at, similarly to how you have a ban on tobacco flavoring, maybe a ban on cannabis flavoring, additive flavors. We need to look at the multi-unit housing ordinances and make sure that they're up to par with having cannabis being grown in those different multi-unit housing residences. So when we think about a lot of these regulations, it's really important that we do this the right way, because we don't wanna have to go back further down the line and realize that we messed up getting here. And we, you guys are making a change for our community, and this is a change that's gonna ultimately be something that the community will face for the rest of its existence. So really think long and hard, and I really appreciate your thoughts moving forward on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for the speaker. Is that okay? Do you have any reference material on the limit of the THC levels?
So right now, when they're looking at research, they're only researching up to 15% THC potency levels. I know that there's a health expert in the audience, so she'll be talking a little bit about that specifically. As far as the regulations and the studying of these products, there's two types of studying. So they do studying for the businesses, and they keep that internal, and they don't release that data on the specific pesticides in the products that are going onto the, onto the plant. And then they do test for a couple of specific chemicals that, that they do release to the public, and that's where they will stop it from going into a dispensary or, or keep it out. Does that help you?
Thank you. And I think going forward, since we have so many who want to speak, I think we'll hold the questions, if we can, till after the public spoken. Hi.
Hello, my name is Fiona Corr. I'm a student at Drake High School. I live at 14 Willa Way on the line between Fairfax and San Anselmo. I spend much of my time here. Fairfax has unique features, such as its restaurants, the movie theater, and its parks that attract many people to spend their time here. What attracts me the most is my love for the sandwiches at Perry's Deli, the pasta at Fry's Lezias, and most importantly, the scoop ice cream. I would like to consider the impact this decision is going to have on me, my peers, and the community. Currently, at almost every big social gathering, I see my fellow students using different forms of marijuana. It saddens me to think that the youth believe that the only source of fun that can be found in our town is either resulting to drugs or alcohol. Increasing access points to marijuana through local storefronts will increase the use among youth. Already, students attain access to marijuana through older siblings, parents, and/or through their peers. And by increasing access points to marijuana through local storefronts, this will also increase the accessibility and further the use among youth and adults. This will be detrimental to their family-friendly community that Fairfax has always stood up for. I appreciate your taking the time to look at this more in-depth, and hope that you will make a decision that will benefit the young people of this town, because the youth of Marin are the future generation that will keep creating change in our society. We are the folks who will be changing our society's perspective on drug use, and we need you to guide us in our youth to find the right path that will lead us to success. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sebastian Meyer. I go to College of Marin. I went to high school at Tam High. I'm 17 years old. And I've been doing some work for the last year or so with Don Carney. I've been trying to use a little bit of my own personal experience, having gotten into experimentation and dependence on cannabis products at a very young age. Having come through that and coming out the other side, I have a lot of really good insight into what's going on in our community, and what's on the street, and what, what is really influencing that. Kids are anxious in school, they are depressed. Kids do not perceive, they have a very low perception of harm, as we call it, for the use of cannabis products nowadays due to the increasing legitimization of it in a corporate sense. And kids will often talk with this concept of it being legal, it being all right, because it's in the media, it's in the music they listen to, it's on their social media apps. And the products that are being, that are entering the black market now, as, as more and more legitimization and commercialization comes into play, are now starting to mimic those of the, of the, of the legal market. So when, maybe a year or two ago, when we were less deep into the whole branding of products that have very high levels of THC, there were black market products that were very blatantly marketed at kids, that had colorful fruity names on them, and boasted very high artificial, false claims of THC content. And now they're starting to look more like the products that you see in medicinal and retail stores, because kids have associated this, this concept of it being a medicine, and this concept of it being a commercial product with high quality, and with purity, and with potency. And it is, the perception of harm, it just continues to drop as this continues. And I do think a storefront would, that storefronts in general negatively impact the perception of harm as it becomes more and more a normative part of the everyday culture in these towns. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hi, my name is Linda Hen, and I live in Kent Field. I'm a parent. I do a lot, I dine, I work, and I shop in Fairfax. I love Fairfax. I like Scoop, too. I also work to reduce underage alcohol and drug use in the Drake and Redwood communities. I care about youth. I'm concerned about the presence of a retail location will further decrease the perception of harm, as Sebastian just talked, and it'll increase access and normalization. Throughout Marin County, delivery is legal, and several jurisdictions are creating protocol to allow it within the county. Adults will have easy access to cannabis products. No city yet, or town, has allowed retail storefront for very good reason, until they have further information. Most towns are taking a wait-and-see attitude, even with the majority of residents voting to legalize cannabis. They are waiting because they know that once they allow brick-and-mortar stores, it will change their town, and they're not willing to risk this for their citizens. I could stand here and cite statistics on the negative impact on other states and towns, crime, impact on youth, impaired driving, but you've heard a lot of this before because you've had 13 meetings. And I appreciate that, you're doing your work. Additionally, our youth will be impacted. They are already under a lot of pressure and stress, again, as Sebastian pointed out, resulting in mental health issues and suicide. We need to install more protective factors, not risk factors. And retail storefronts send an additional message of normalization, and that is a risk When cannabis is legal federally, we will have systems in place where there can be a proper testing and products, of products to protect consumers. We need to wait for this to occur, for many reasons, including changing this from an all-cash business, and setting up taxation and regulation to protect towns and give them the tax revenue they are owed. This process has been much more daunting than the state of California ever anticipated. The revenue is considerably less than the state projected, and they have altered their outlook. Nothing is working as originally planned. The state is grappling with how to handle this safely. This is a work in progress, and now is not the time to test it in Fairfax. Wait for more information. The bottom line is, we are not ready for retail. We will be, but we aren't yet.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Good evening. Don Carney, 32 Mountain View Road, Fairfax. Since '75. In my profession, I run the Marin County Youth Court. About 70% of the cases that come before the youth court are substance-driven, and about, oh, I'd say about 80% of them, the substance in question is marijuana. And one of the things I'm most concerned with is how rapidly young people have become involved in the concentrates, the high potency. I see sixth graders who are vaping tobacco, and by the 10th, by the eighth grade, the very next year, they are dabbing high potency marijuana. And I ask the young person, "Do you know the difference between leaf and concentrate?" And they say, "Sure, Don, we know the, the difference. With the concentrate, you're vaping, and you don't get caught at school. The leaf, if you smoke it, you stink, and you get caught, and you get in trouble." That's as far as the kids look at it. So that's that end of it. The industry's end of it is, all the addictive industries have to, all the industry, tobacco, alcohol, pornography, marijuana, the newest, rely on addicts for profit. And the alcohol world is an example. 70% of Americans drink, 21% of those who drink have one drink a week. The alcohol industry doesn't make a profit off of those folks. 50% of the folks who drink, I mean, 10% of the folks who drink are purchasing 50% of the alcohol. That's where the profit margin exists. How do you create an addict? You enter that substance into their system while they're young, and their brain is developing. Best way to create an addict. A kid can become addicted to a substance in six to nine months, that after the frontal lobes are developed, it will take six to nine years. So if you look at the advertising in every state that's legalized it, they're targeting it to kids, they're targeting it to kids as a business plan, they want addicts so they can have profit. That's deplorable. Don't play into their hands. Don't give them a retail outlet.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm with the Health and Human Services. I was told I would get five minutes for my time as an agency. I do have a packet of materials here that I was gonna hand you.
Can you provide your name?
Yes. Sorry. My name is Melissa Struzzo. I'm the Substance Use Prevention Coordinator for the county. Okay. So this evening, I'm speaking to you, as I said, as a Substance Use Prevention Coordinator for the county. I've been a public health professional for over 20 years, and I have experience in substance use prevention and treatment. And as the current Marin County Substance Use Prevention Coordinator with the Marin County Health and Human Services Department, I really believe that health considerations are vital in informing decisions around access to cannabis. In 2017, an expert panel of researchers and scientists reviewed all of the available cannabis research worldwide, and prepared a report for the National Academies of Sciences, sorry. And this report was entitled "Health Effects of Cannabis and Cannaboids: And the Current State Evidence and Recommendations for Research," which provided a summary of emerging evidence of the health impacts of cannabis, both positive and negative. The comprehensive review of existing evidence can be summarized into a few key findings. The panel of researchers found evidence for benefits of cannabis in treating some medical conditions, including forms of chronic pain. But the researchers also found substantial evidence for cannabis harms, and that's including increased risk for motor vehicle crashes or collisions, dependence with regular use, impaired cognition and academic performance among young people, and increased risk of early-onset schizophrenia with regular use. It is important to note, and this has been said earlier as well, that nearly all studies conducted up to date have not assessed the risks associated with using newly-available high potency cannabis products that are marketed for recreational use, namely the cannabis oils and concentrates that were mentioned earlier for dabbing. And they actually can go up to as high as 99% THC potency, not just, I said 97, all the way up to 99%. Most studies in the US and abroad have actually researched cannabis products with a THC potency only around 15%, and most fall around 12% or lower. So we already know that the substantial evidence is there at this very lower potency we yet have known about the higher potency products. So every day of my position as Alcohol and Other Drug Prevention Coordinator for the county, I'm tasked with considering the health impacts on Marin County communities that I serve to work to find strategies and solutions to addressing the health issues of these communities, including Fairfax. I currently sit on two separate statewide committees on marijuana prevention, and have attended multiple conferences just recently, and panel discussions on cannabis, including the North American Cannabis Summit, the High Intensity Drug Trafficking Summit that occurred just a few weeks ago, and a panel discussion that was moderated by the California Department of Public Health that looked specifically at the regulatory practices, as well as public health and economic implications post-legalization in California. I've been able to hear directly from regulators, researchers, public health professionals, substance use disorder treatment professionals, and legislators about the challenges they are facing in developing regulations, as you are hearing this today in the 13 meetings that you've already had, and enforcing these regulations, especially these regulations considering that they're on change on a very regular basis. So the one thing I wanted to bring your attention to was those packets of materials that I provided you with, and a lot of that speaking to the environmental concerns. So I did attend a conference recently, and we had an ecologist from the Ecology Center in Humboldt, which is part of the Emerald Triangle, and he discussed some of the severe environmental detrimental impacts on the environment. So even though, you know, Fairfax is So even though, you know, Fairfax does not necessarily allow commercial cultivation and production, the presence of these cannabis businesses would create a local demand for cannabis products that are having this detrimental impact on California's environment. The majority of all commercial cultivation sites in California are located in the Emerald Triangle, and they provide the cannabis for most of California, as well as most of the U.S. So we're producing here in the U.S. most of the cannabis that gets sent across out of our state lines. There are also large-scale production sites throughout the Sierra Nevada foothills. So based on this presentation that I attended and given at this recent cannabis conference, this ecologist in Humboldt said that the wildlife in the Emerald Triangle and the neighboring counties are being severely impacted by rodenticide exposure and from these cultivation sites. This is legal and illegal grows. The habitat is being destroyed, so this is actually increasing significantly the risk for devastating wildfires and causing erosion that is leading to flooding.
Can you please wrap it up?
Okay. Yeah, so I'm just done. So just in conclusion, I think what I really want to say is that we're here to share the goal of thriving and healthy communities in each jurisdiction, and we navigate these changes and choices differently around cannabis. I thought it was important to share this information to you with you today about the emerging scientific evidence that raises both serious public and health and environmental concerns, especially for youth. So something to consider.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kelsey Fernandez. I just wanted to finish up a couple points. As Melissa was saying, the soil and water are being contaminated by the use of synthetic fertilizers and pesticides, and water is being diverted, causing streams and creeks to dry up. This affects humans, since individuals will be consuming these products that contain these toxic chemicals. One issue of particular concern is the presence of banned toxic chemicals and permitted legally grown cannabis. The Bureau of Cannabis Control and California Department of Public Health recently issued in January 2019 a set of regulations that outlines required testing procedures for the testing laboratories. According to Ivan at IERC, the regulations did not require testing for some banned chemical substances that are extremely toxic to humans. Illegal grows that have been identified as having diverted at least 1.1 billion gallons of water, which is enough water to supply all of San Francisco residents for over two months. For legal cultivation sites, we know that marijuana is a very thirsty plant and requires about six gallons of water a day for cultivation. The cost of regulating is exceeding tax revenues, even for small towns like Fairfax. The Bureau of Cannabis Control have had to revise the projected tax revenues since the previous estimates were grossly higher than what had actually occurred in the first year of legalization. If you do look at that packet, you will see several instances where there were either businesses having to remove their products or products not being allowed onto the shelves because of these toxic chemicals that were found. And at this point in time, there simply is not the infrastructure in place to be able to regulate what is on the shelves and what is being sold. This will all come in time, and I would just like to repeat what everybody else is saying, is that we're just not there yet. And I forget who quoted this, but recently somebody quoted, "It's like building the airplane in the air." We'll get there, hopefully eventually, sooner rather than later. It'll be illegal across the country, and so we can test these products, and we can have regulations that will be able to protect the people, as well as serve everybody's interests, and allow a safe product for people to consume. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Kelly Murphy. I live in San Anselmo. I've got fifth graders who are most likely on their way to Fairfax, White Hill, for school next year, along with all their classmates. My son plays for West Marin Little League, so I was just up at the field picking up all of the team gear for their major's team. And the smell was something else, I'll tell you. It's potent up there right now. My question, and this may be something that you guys have covered in the previous 13 meetings, and if so, I apologize, but the proximity to the field for the storefront seems within the 600-foot setback that was originally suggested. So I'm just curious if that is a consideration, the proximity of the dispensary to the children's play space there at Central Field? And I'd love your thoughts on that. Again, our kids are here all the time for practice and for recreation. They like swirl too, SCOOP too, they like swirl as well, they like SCOOP too. And they're often here on their own, because it's really fun for 11-year-olds to go to the movie and go to SCOOP, and I want to make sure that they can have a little opportunity to explore with their friends and be safe in this environment, because this is a really special place. So, thank you. That's my question.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak?
Hey, good evening. My name is David Spampanato. I'm a Fairfax resident. I'm also a part of the West Marin Little League Board. I guess the board, and we support, you know, five, nearly 500 families coming through Central Field and such, and we would just like to ask the planning commission in the town to, you know, with respect to the buffer, there's 600 feet. We feel that's, you know, we would like it, you know, greater than 600 feet, but at the same time, we want to make sure that there's no exceptions to the buffer for recreational storefronts. So we're definitely opposed to any exceptions, and we feel like making exceptions for individuals or certain businesses is not sound policy. So we'd just like to hopefully have the town respect the 600 feet, maybe look to increase it, and that's it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Roselle, and I'm the Director of First Friends Monastery that had been mentioned in the past meetings. And you've been talking about definitions of schools and daycare centers and preschools, but I just want to confirm what the staff have reported. The First Friends Monastery is a licensed child gear center, and it has a kindergarten program. It has a monastery primary program that teaches reading, mathematical functions, geometry, geography, and science and biology. And that's what we do, to prepare the kids to go to either first grade, or they move on to kindergarten at public schools. So if you have other questions about my program, I'd be happy to answer that, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Going once? Okay, I'm gonna bring it back to the commission, closing the public comments, and I'm gonna bring it back to the commission. So the first thing I wanted to do, oh, thanks, is try and address cultivation and see if we can address the three policy issues that we have before us for cultivation. And how I saw them, there were three of them. One that staff brought up was the question about indoor cultivation and the question about locked and secured inside a private home. And I believe I was the one that initially questioned the language on that one. My thought on that was, within the private residence, I didn't see a need for having indoor cultivation within another locked room within a locked private residence. So, and there was probably some confusion when I asked that, because the optional piece, I think that was put in there, was to require that. So I just wanted to get some sense from my fellow commissioners as to how you felt on indoor cultivation, if you felt there was a need within a private residence to have the cannabis within a locked room inside a locked residence.
Yes, I think that is important, because whoever's cultivating might have children over, for example, who might be able to open the door and wander in and grab a piece and see what it's like. So that, for that reason alone, you know, I think, I think most of these regulations actually aren't too bad. But for that specific question, my answer is yes. I think the locked door inside the house where the cultivation is going on, there's lights, you know, it probably looks like, you know, close encounters of the third kind with the light coming out, might be an attractive nuisance as it is. So lock it. Yes, thanks.
I would disagree. I think requiring a lock on the inside is far too intrusive in terms of Fairfax regulation of personal cultivation. Many people growing inside are not gonna have children. I also just think that responsible parents will take the precautions and that we don't have to dictate what level of precautions a responsible parent would need to take.
Before the student leaves, I want to say something, just real quick. Sorry. On the public comments, I think the two students, the college of Marin student in yellow and you from the Drake High, to me, were the most impactful statements. And, no, I just want to say this, and we're thinking in this, you know, direction. You said certain things that were important for you to say, and you should both consider continuing in your public speaking careers. Thank you.
Your input's been invaluable.
So, do you have an opinion whether, okay, we're trying to get a sense so we can move on with this for the next meeting, having a product coming back? So you have, so do I take that, you have no either-or on that one? Whether within a private residence that's cultivating cannabis, do you feel there is a need for that residence to have that cannabis grown in a locked room in their private residence, or is a lock on the front door sufficient? Norma?
I do not have a preference for locked rooms. I think they can cause other problems.
Okay, and I agree with Mimi and Norma, I don't see the need for that, as long as the residence itself is secured, locked and secured. Okay, the second one is buffers. So for outdoor cultivation, do we feel that we need to maintain what was brought over from the old code as far as having a 200-foot buffer?
What page are you referring to?
So page eight of the draft at the top, number seven, "Outdoor cultivation is prohibited on parcels within 200 feet of any school or daycare center." So Phil?
I think that's, that's a fine, that's a fine statement. That's a good policy right there. 200 feet for outdoor cultivation buffers. I mean, it would be impossible if you, if you didn't do something like that. You couldn't have a 600-foot buffer for every outdoor, nobody would be able to do it, I think.
I'm not in favor of a buffer for outdoor cultivation.
I'm sorry, would you, could someone clarify, is the buffer?
Buffer's for outdoor cultivation, 200 feet from a school.
200 is fine.
I agree with the 200-foot buffer for outdoor cultivation as well.
So I would say no to the buffer, but it looks like the buffer carries for this group. So the third policy issue for cultivation is whether we want to have an exception policy.
Exception to what?
So if I might, I feel strongly about the exception policy, for this is the personal cultivation limits of six plants indoor and six plants outdoor. And I think it's critical, frankly, that we allow for variances, and I looked at the option for variances, and there's even a limit set forth there. I don't think there should be a limit if we allow a variance. I think it should be decided on a case-by-case basis. It sounds like on the staff report, nobody's asked for a variance from the 18-plant limit that currently applies for medical cultivation. But if we're gonna change it to, I'm sorry?
Variance is a very particular word in land use, and so we're not really talking about a variance here, right?
We're allowing an exception then.
Yeah, okay.
And I would be in favor of allowing an exception at the discretion of whoever it is that's affording the discretion, whether that's the town manager, or the planning commissioner, the town council. Ultimately, I would imagine that based on the specific circumstances, we should allow for the town to allow people to apply for an increase up to the amount that the state constitution would allow them to have for the purposes of addressing their medical needs.
Yeah, I agree with Mimi. The medical aspect is, is an important thing, so we need to allow for exceptions, I think, if they have such criteria as, you know, a doctor's prescription and, you know, that that's the main thing. And then anything else that, you know, they need to show that what criteria are developed based on that type of thing.
So let me interject in here, and just to clarify, what we have in here for the exception policy is an exception to either the number of plants and/or the buffer, correct?
No. Correct.
Correct. So what the exception policy as written is saying that there would be an exception policy, and it addresses the requirements of that, where somebody could come in and ask for either an exception to either the number of plants or the 200-foot buffer based on these requirements. So it's both of them. So I just want to make it clear for this commission, if you go along with that as written, that it's, somebody can request a buffer for either of those.
I think that goes without saying. The buffer would have to perhaps adjust if there's a request for a different, you know, pattern here. So, I mean, if you're gonna grow 18 plants, you certainly need more room than if you're gonna grow six. So if that's gonna be allowed, I think, and you don't change the buffer, it doesn't really work.
On the other hand, if I may through the chair, if you're requesting 18 plants, the fragrance from 200 feet of 18 plants will be very different from the fragrance from 200 feet of six plants. So I would be supportive of an exception option for medical cannabis, but not the 200-foot buffer.
You want to explain that again? You confused me.
The buffer, in my mind, has more to do with owners of people walking in front of the property. At 200 feet, 18 plants would be much more fragrant than six. So I do agree with requesting a medical exception to the quantity, but not a buffer, if they can be separated.
Okay, so when I look at... So when I look at the language, it says, "The town manager may grant a medical cannabis administrative exception only if the following findings can be met." And those findings go into the medical need. It goes into, "It shall not constitute a public nuisance." The cultivation of no more than six additional cannabis plants should be authorized through a medical cannabis administrative exception. So it seems to address those types of issues you're concerned with when you look at the findings that the town manager needs to make.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at page three, section 10D.
Look on the actual proposed language for the ordinance on page nine, under 17, 110, 310. And while you're looking at that, Norma, I just want to weigh in. You know, what we're talking about is the rights of an individual with respect to medication as opposed to concern about the odor of a plant affecting people. So for me, there's no question that an individual's right to adequate medication in adequate amounts to deal with an illness supersedes what I perceive, frankly, as a relatively low concern about the odor of a plant.
So while Norma's reading that, Michelle, do you have a comment?
I, I agree with Norma about maintaining the exception, amending subsection A to delete B7, which is the 200-foot buffer. I would put forward, though, that item F regarding the aggrieved party and an appeal, that they're not receiving any notification here, so they may not have an, you know, maybe the town manager who does that written approval is somehow notifying adjoining people. I, I don't want to kind of get into that, but I like an exception. But, but nobody's going to be able to appeal because they're not getting notified in here.
So go back to, and, and Norma hasn't finished kind of looking at the findings. So are you ready to do that, or you want me to? Okay. So she hasn't finished reading the findings to make her decision. So can you repeat your feelings on the exceptions for both the buffer and/or the number of plants?
I support the staff writing as proposed with the exception of item A, deleting the last line, which is subdivisions, delete B7, and modifying item F to create a notification opportunity.
Actually, that's something I've noticed throughout, is there's, there are some, so there's appeal periods, and, and there's, there's not a notification of the potential appellant. So that needs to be just reviewed. There's a few places where that kind of logically happens.
Through the chair. I will agree with Commissioner Rodriguez's comment.
If you guys are looking at the number of plants and leaving that in, would you agree with me that the six, the limit of six under C4 should be removed? So I'm asking this for the rest of the commissioners, even if you don't agree that the buffer should be subject to an exception, you do agree that the number of plants may be subject to an exception. And as I read C4, it kind of leads the, the maximum number that can be allowed under this exception would be an additional six. And I don't think we should set that ceiling. How do you guys feel about that?
Okay. You know, I, I feel like we're dealing a little bit in the ether. I mean, we don't know whether it's even, so I've seen marijuana plants cultivated by someone I know who, they look like Christmas tree, one plant would, and he's got really bad med, you know, he's like fighting off cancer. One plant is enough for him for two years. So, so this is what, this is why I'm, I'm, I'm a little boggled by this, is I, I don't disagree with Mimi either. If someone needs 18 plants, and they can get through the findings, but that needs to include a medical letter from a doctor that this person needs to consume, I don't know how you'd do that and live. But if that, I, I would go with 18 plants if, if, if they have a doctor. So if we can write it in there like that.
If people are using their plants to make edibles, that is not crazy. So there are certain types of concentrations required for
Then we're making, that's not just
Required for certain medical patients.
Don't they need a license to turn it into edibles?
If I'm at home and I'm growing, if I'm at home and I am growing marijuana in my backyard and I want to make a brownie, I don't think I need a license to do that.
You know, I'm, I asked legal counsel, would someone need a license to do that?
No, limited processing is allowed for personal, under the rubric of personal cultivation.
Okay, then I can see.
So, so if I may.
It's a live debate, folks.
Could I, so, may I say one thing? There's a difference between cultivating, growing your own, and using. So we're not talking about a medical patient's right to use as much as they may need to use. We're not talking about that. We're talking about whether or not they can grow as much as their property will allow because they potentially may need that much. It's, it, there's a difference between using and growing.
Yeah, there is. And we've also seen there's a difference between doing something yourself and being sure that you know its quality and its history, and whether it really is organic, et cetera. So.
So here's, since I haven't weighed in on this one yet, I am for the exception policy for both the buffer and the number. We haven't had any requests in the past for exceptions. And did we have a number at that point in time that we, a limit on what they could come in with for an exception?
No, it would be in, in excess of the 18.
So it would be in, in excess of the 18, and we didn't have any requests for that. I'm fine with, right now, the limit of six. Considering we didn't have any before, I would rather just go with that for now. And then if we find that over the course of time, that we have a lot of requests for exceptions that come in, and we see that six isn't meeting the needs, then I think we can bring that back and change that.
Madam Chair, would you clarify that you mean six additional plants with an exception on top of the six originally permitted?
Correct. So you can, right now, you could potentially grow six outside, so this brings it to another six, to a total of 12.
That's what I said.
I would, again, recommend we not do that, just because what we're talking about is giving the discretion to approve an additional number of plants to some body within the town, either the manager, or the planning commissioner, or the council. I don't think we've clearly set that out yet. But to the extent that that individual, in their discretion, after reviewing the material, determined that really, in a particular case, more than 12 plants was in fact justified, I would hate to tie their hands to not allow them to make that decision. I think we should be able to trust the decision-makers within the town to use their discretion appropriately. So again, I would recommend we not limit the additional number of plants.
Would you, would you, what if the limit were 12 here, and then the max was 18? Would you, just asking.
Again, I think it's silly to set a number that is going to tie the hands of the decision-maker faced with a specific request for an exception to a total limit that we've already required.
Okay. So since I think we have three up here that feel, concur with the exception for the buffer and the number of plants, I would go and agree with Mimi that we leave it with those findings that are written in there to town management, which also includes, you know, the demonstrated medical need and all. So how do you feel about that, Phil?
Yeah. I mean, I, I think we could say in the ordinance, limited to six, but allow for exceptions above that if there's a medical need. I mean, these are going to come up for review with the person or entity that issues this exception.
If we're
So maybe there's a compromise position. We could say six in the ordinance, but, you know, allow up to by discretion if need be medically 18.
If we're willing, I mean, to me, we've already got the six as part of the exception. So if we're, we're feeling that with the findings there, and, which, you know, is the medical concurrence and all that, that the town manager can, or designee can make that determination, I would just leave it open at this point and agree with Mimi until we see the results of that in a year or so and see if it's working for the town. So I would just go with the exceptions to both. I'm good with that. With no, with taking out the six.
Okay. Can we get a poll of the other commissioners, particularly Rodriguez and Fragoso, on this?
I do not agree to an exemption to the buffer. I do agree to an exception to the number of plants, and I am willing to go to a total of 18 for 12 additional, because it at least provides some consistency with the rest of our ordinance with 18.
I'm unchanged from my previous position.
Can you repeat what you just said? I'm sorry.
I'm not sure, but.
Okay.
She wants to change number four.
I like the buff, I want to keep the buffer, but I would be willing to change from six to 12 additional plants for a maximum of 18, which is consistent with our, our limit per the ordinance.
So you would go with A and change the amount?
Yeah.
Okay. So there's, okay. So are there still three of us that are in favor of both the, the exception for the buffer and the number? Phil?
Well, yes.
Again, just, you know, throwing this out there, that we've got to do some compromising to move this forward, but.
Right. I, I have, so if someone could demonstrate, again, if someone could demonstrate a medical, you know, doc, MD, I'm talking about medical, not, you know, not guru's, you know, psychology parlor. I'm talking about a doctor giving a prescription and letting the town know, or a letter saying, yes, this person needs 18 plants. I'm okay with that. If 36 plants, if they have the acreage, but we do have this protective thing of shall not be a public nuisance, constitute a public nuisance. So that is a protective measure as well. So therefore, you know, if it's, if it's across the street from a school, and they want to grow 32 plants, and it's going, the odor and all that, of course, the odor won't affect someone maybe, you know, psychotically, but it might be an attractive nuisance, though, like a swimming pool is. You can't smell that either, but you can see the water, and gee, it's a hot day. So, so I'm, if that happened, you know, an actual prescription by a medical doctor licensed in the state of California, if I have to be, and maybe we should write it in like this, is, then I would go with, with up to 18, and maybe beyond, I suppose. I mean, you can't tell what a doctor's going to say. So I'm kind of with Mimi then on that, because I'm thinking, this is, yeah, this is medical. This is, this is, someone really needs this. And I've seen some people in pretty bad condition who have improved with, at least CBD anyway, but, I mean, this, this kind of thing maybe needs to be more flexible. So in order to move it along, I will, I will agree with Mimi and Cindy. Thank you.
So just restating that, that's agreeing to the exception for the number and the buffer, and taking out the six.
Right. This is medical only.
And that was three yeses for that. So does that take care of all of the policy issues with cultivation?
Unless we want to look at cultivation on multifamily. But insofar as the visibility aspects are already addressed, and the extreme unlikelihood that anybody will be allowed to do that in a, in a multifamily context, I think we can just go beyond, you know, focus on other items.
Quit while you're ahead.
Right. And earlier, we had discussed balconies, and I said no on balconies. I've changed my mind on that. Just by looking at a lot of balconies, I've kind of changed my mind on it. So I'm okay with balconies.
Yeah. And I would think that if, in the course of, you know, implementation of this, somebody living in a multi-use residence on a parcel where there were already six outdoor, again, came to the town for a specific exception, the way I read this, it would be included within that language, potentially because of the limit of the six, right?
I guess the question is, is are we going to say that the, the other provisions regarding the lack of visibility? I think that was the main challenge with the balconies, is it's going to be visible in many instances.
Oh, I'm not talking about the balconies. I mean, I'm, I'm just saying in general, yeah, I guess, you know, the regular standards that we already have for the visibility is, is what we're contemplating including there. But I'm just talking about the number.
Yes, there, to my, to my understanding, per the commission's 3-2 vote, if somebody wanted to exceed the six plants allowable per property, and it were a multifamily property, they could apply for that medical exception. As noted previously in separate hearing, the landlord retains the ability to prohibit the growth of marijuana on their premises. So that would be a private end, situation with which the town would not be involved.
And I was just concerned about us as a government body limiting the medical patients, what appears to be their right under state law.
So are we good with cultivation and moving on to?
Let's move on.
All right. So cannabis uses, the first one that I had here was the youth center definition. So if you go to page four of your draft, Y at the top, we have an optional piece there that further defines youth center. The optional piece of that is this definition, "Shall not include any private martial arts, private tutoring center, yoga, ballet, music, art studio, or similar studio of this nature, nor shall it include any private gym, athletic training facility, pizza parlor," and you can read the rest of that. I think the, the question and the concern there was when you talk about what a youth center is, at the top of that, youth center means any public or private facility that is primarily used to hold recreational or social activities for minors. It's kind of vague and broad as far as what someone could, could identify as a youth center. So the optional language further clarifies what might, might not be considered a youth center under this. And I know the other piece of this, where it says, "Youth center means any public or private facility that is primarily used," I know there are some local jurisdictions in the Bay Area that have even gone so far as to change that primarily used to, like always used, to further kind of restrict that. But the question here is whether you feel that the optional language here would be helpful in further clarifying what a youth center is and isn't for the purpose of this, because you're also going to be looking at this when you get into things like buffers. you get into things like buffers and everything else. So Norma, I'll start with you.
I think the definition of youth center is fine. I could go either way on the optional language. I, I don't see those as youth centers per se, even though youth may congregate.
Okay, so it sounds like for you, the optional language would be helpful. Phil?
The optional language to me is helpful except for the last part, or a location which is primarily utilized as an administrative office or facility for youth programs organizations. That's an office youth are going to knowingly visit frequently. So I would include that in the definite, I mean, I would take that out of the, I, I wouldn't add it to youth center, but I would take it out of the optional language. Otherwise, I'm, I'm good with the optional language.
Can staff clarify that aspect of, of what they saw as an administrative office in relation to this?
Sure. This language has been used by various jurisdictions around the state, so I didn't come up with it myself. But I read it to mean, like, for example, if the Girl Scouts of America had an administrative office in town, that would not be a youth center, even though the Girl Scouts as an organization do operate youth programs.
I think- So does that help you, Phil?
Well, maybe if you just added language that youths don't regularly visit or something like that. If it's, if it's an adult Girl Scout office, then right.
I think there's a difference between administrative office for youth programs or organizations and facility for youth programs or organizations. It seems like administrative office is what we're getting at as opposed, and so maybe we just strike or facility.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
So Mimi, are you in favor of that optional language with the change?
I like it, yeah.
Michelle?
I like the optional language, but I'm just wondering, how does that, and I'm not sure I'm interpreting these two documents correctly, but under 5.56.160, where the application for this article, article to an existing medical-
Can you give me a, I'm sorry, can you cite a page two, please?
There's no page number on it. And this is the new draft permit, permitting?
So you're in the business permit section?
Yes, under 5.56.160. And so this is talking about the existing use and how they have a permit to operate an adult-use cannabis delivery, and talking about how they could continue that until it expires and then they could renew it. And so if the ball field is within 600 feet, does, are they still exempted under this, under their renewal then, or they have to meet the criteria and therefore would this youth center include a ball field and therefore they wouldn't be able to renew?
For their existing operations, they would be able to renew.
Okay, thank you.
Is that because they were grandfathered in prior to any state regulations?
Correct.
Thank you.
So do I take that, that we're all in favor of the optional language with Mimi's change? Okay.
Yes.
Just cruising along here, we now get to buffers. So page five, seventeen, one, ten, zero, forty.
I am in support of the buffers.
So you're going to have to look at the alternatives on the top of page five. Are you in favor of buffers?
I'm in favor of buffers for cannabis storefront retailers.
And when you talk about buffers, which buffers are you talking about for cannabis store retailers?
Within a 600-foot radius of a school daycare center or youth center as identified in alternative number one on page five.
Through the chair, if I may. I think the question about buffers and what these alternatives are supposed to lay out is for, because the town's considering allowing both storefront retailers and non-storefront retailers, the delivery-only business, do we want to stick with the 600-foot buffers for schools, daycares, and youth centers? Do we want to say that delivery-only businesses need less buffers? Or do we want to allow it, allow exceptions to be made on a case-by-case basis based on the factors? So I probably should have labeled these a little differently, but at the bottom of page four in the draft ordinance, that would be the, everybody, both storefront retailers and non-storefront retailers have to meet a 600-foot buffer for all three sensitive uses option. The alternative on page, the top of page five would say storefront retailers have to meet all three buffers, but delivery-only retailers only need to meet the buffer for schools. And then the optional language is the kind of ad hoc exception process based on findings. So if that hopefully will help organize.
You know, I can see a lot of work went into this and a lot of thought, and this has really, you know, made my job easier last night. Thank you.
So do you want me to come back to you, Norma?
Please.
Okay, Phil?
Yeah, I, I think that the 600-foot buffer for storefronts needs to remain, for sure. That's me. And as far as if, if the delivery service works like the regulations say, there should be no odors, no visibility, nobody would know what they're doing, and it would be kind of up to a public outcry about it somehow that it brought it back here, you know, to, to, so I'm agreeing with the 600-foot radius of a school too, as written, rather than school daycare center or youth center. So I think that's fine as written. I mean, during the silence, I might add, because it's state law, state law gives us this buffer. And so if the, you know, state legislature feels it's reasonable, then it's reasonable. I don't think-
So Phil-
You know, and in San Francisco, there was something like seven or 10 dispensaries, but there's a lot more population, a lot more land area, you know, so it's just kind of, we have very little place-
So Phil, to, to clarify, you want storefront retailers to be affected by all three buffers zones, correct?
School daycare center and youth center.
Right.
And then for delivery-only businesses, you want no buffers or you want the 600-foot buffer?
Only of the school.
The six, the 600-foot radiance of, radius of a school, that's different.
For, for-
Not, not necessar, yeah, delivery, for delivery, 600-foot buffer radius of a school, rather than school daycare center or youth center. That's the difference. I think it's fine as, as written.
Can I ask a, a clarification question of our legal counsel? What if we had a storefront retail that also had delivery, but this is delivery only, right? What if a storefront retail has delivery? Would that then, if we're saying delivery only within 600 feet of a school, would a retail-delivery combo have to meet the school daycare center because of the retail component? It would meet the stricter requirement. Okay.
Correct.
Then I, I like the alternative with delivery-only retails with a 600-foot radius of a school, but any storefront retail within the radius of any school, daycare, or youth center.
Before I let you two off the hook, there is a third option. There is another piece to this, which is the optional acceptance, exception. So that, you know, considering that we've spoken before about wanting some competition in town, and that when we look at our town, there's limited areas where potentially a delivery or retail could go into, this optional language here talks about having an exception process if the town feels that a particular location is available that fits those criteria.
Through the chair, though, is that for both retail and delivery and medicinal? Or is it just for the storefront retailers and the cannabis delivery only, as in the alternative?
As drafted, it could be for any, for either the storefront retailers or the delivery-only retailers.
I would stay with the alternative and not, not the third option?
Not the exception process?
Is that what you call the optional?
Yes. Sorry.
That's correct.
So let me go back to Phil again. You wanted retail storefront, all buffers, delivery, just the 600-foot for school. What about the optional exception capability?
Looks like a can of worms to me. I, I just think that once we start, you know, working with options to buffers, I mean, exceptions to buffer zones, and wondering whether we need to define school daycare center or youth, or daycare centers or youth centers as kind of sensitive uses. I don't know. But I don't think we should reduce that buffer. So I don't like the optional part. And that's clear, right? All the language under optional, the first paragraph and one through four.
Mimi?
Well, first off, I'm opposed to seventeen, one, ten, oh, forty, A1, which is limiting cannabis storefront retailers to highway commercial and central commercial. At this point, I think we should also include, since you guys look like you're going to go with a buffer, I would say include CL as well in that. So in terms of the, so I'm not in favor of the buffer. I would have eliminated it and allowed the retail and delivery in the commercial zone. So I, if you guys are asking, do I agree with limiting the buffer just to retail as opposed to delivery, I would say yes, because I don't agree with the buffer for retail or delivery.
Say that, I'm sorry. Say that again, please.
Well, I don't agree with the buffer. I would limit our retail and delivery to CC, CL, and CH, and I wouldn't include a buffer. And so if you want me to tell you, if I, if you guys are going to go with a buffer, would I agree to limit that just to retail and not to delivery only? I would say yes, because I don't want a buffer. So if I'm going to pick my second choice, it would be keep the buffer as small as you can. And so I think I'll just be consistent on that all the way through. And in that vein, I would support the exception.
So no to the buffers for retail and delivery, but yes to the exception? Sorry, I'm just-
Yeah, and I would include CL. I, I wonder if what you guys think about seventeen, one, ten, oh, forty, A1.
Can we do that after we finish this one? We'll go back there? Okay. Michelle?
I support the alternative with the added language that the attorney was saying, which is that it was just the defining that if you had delivery that was with one of these other, with a retailer, then you automatically went up into the 600. That's not clear in this description, so it's a minor clarifying point. But yes to the alternative, no to the optional, and I disagree with changing A1. I think it's fine the way it is.
So because I'm getting a little tired here, let me go through that again with you. So for the alternative, you're in favor of the retailers with all three buffers?
Yes.
And if it's delivery only, do you want-
It's written fine the way it is.
I know, but it's for my brain, the way I'm taking my notes here. So for delivery only, you want just the school?
Yes.
Buffer, okay.
But if you have delivery and a storefront, then it's going to jump up into the 600, but that just needs to be clarified in this ordinance when they refine it.
I don't know why you keep saying jump up to 600. It still is 600.
Well, it's going to apply to school, daycare, and youth center.
Right.
Because of the retail component.
You know, another thing that, that happens in municipalities is that there are marijuana-zoned districts. And I have, I have friends who are realtors who constantly send me ads about marijuana, you know, cannabis-zoned areas of towns where you can put a facility or something. And we might want to consider for the future, you know, instead of keeping kind of this loose CL, CH district-
Just a-
Compendium, kind of zoning a, an area, which we can sort of see on the maps. It's a very small area of the town, but-
It could be like an overlay.
Yes, we're familiar with, or you have a list and you just add cannabis as a, potentially a permitted use subject to whatever. So there's a bunch of ways you can define areas that it's allowed.
I mean, then you might be able to sort of, the buffers would be built into that, you know?
So from my perspective, I mean, I think the buffers, you know, for me, I think the buffers should be flexible. But since I can see that the rest of the commissioners have a certain stance on retail and all three buffers, if I get that right, then I would go along with having the retail and having all three buffers applied to it, delivery only the school. But I think what, again, for me is important is to have that exception or that optional process that because we are a small area here, that we have the ability to look at a particular location if it seems to fit this criteria from the town's standpoint and meets the needs.
However, we currently have three opposed to that optional exception process.
You guys have the votes?
Correct. Correct.
Do you wanna go back to the zones?
Yeah, we heard from Commissioner Rodriguez that she would leave it the way it is, and I would add CL. I'm interested in what the rest of the commission thinks.
So CL for which part of it?
We're just looking at 17-110-040-A1.
So for, if, if I may, through the chair, maybe help move this along. For 17-110-040-A1 cannabis storefront retailers, I would not include the CL zone. So I also accept A1 and 2 as written.
Can I ask why?
Yes, because I have heard so many complaints from the community about the CL zone, which is the location of our current medicinal facility, which people seem to not be concerned with because of the medicinal nature. It's not exactly a retail storefront. And because they're also allowed to do delivery from there because they're already delivering. And so I'm listening to the concerns of all the baseball kids and the parents and the teachers and the students who tell us there is a big drug problem.
When you look at the map on the back of the packet, the second to last one, attachment four, because you've already agreed to the buffer, the two properties that are now excluded are the Mandarin Garden one up at the top and Deer Park Villa. It's not gonna include the CL, which is within the buffer zone. So what you're effectively doing is saying no to those two little CLs in yellow on this map.
And I think that I'd like to ask DAF to tell us about that zoning district, because there was some language in that zoning district that led me to go in that direction. It had to do with what is the definition of CL and what were the additional uses that were allowed in that zone? That's, it wasn't the map, because the map was encouraging, but the language.
So it might have been the issue of retail.
I was responding to Commissioner Fregoso's rationale, which I disagree with, frankly.
But I see your point about that particular area of my concern not being allowed due to its position within the buffer.
And so if you guys wanna talk about the other concerns that Commissioner Rodriguez, before, maybe if we opine?
In terms of the language in 17-090, or 092, which is the CL zone district, it doesn't allow retail generally. So that may have been what your comment was pertaining to a storefront retailer in the CL zone.
But it would allow delivery?
Well.
That's A2. So on our language, A2 does allow delivery only in the CL. The question is, looking at the map and the two discrete properties in the CL, is there really a reason to say no retail for, for cannabis, adult-use cannabis retail at either of those two locations as a practical matter?
You mean, other than the fact that retail is not currently allowed?
Right, because what we write will control, I think.
Well, I've got, I've got some comments on those.
Or what the town council writes will control.
Let's wait for Norma. Do you have a response on that?
Actually, I would like to hear from legal counsel in terms of allowing retail in a zone that currently does not allow it. At, when you come back to us.
Well, we should try and get that answered tonight.
They're coming back to us anyway. They're not gonna answer that tonight.
Do you have a potential answer for that?
Well, I can briefly say, I mean, Commissioner Newton is right. We can make the zone regulations be whatever we want. We just will have to make the findings that those changes are consistent with the general plan. Yes, retail is currently not generally allowed in the CL zone. However, the current dispensary ordinance does allow medical marijuana dispensaries in the CHCC and CL zone. So it could probably go either way.
That would be only medical?
It already is medical allowed in the CL.
But it's medical retail in the CL.
Can, can I, oh, maybe, and when you, what happens is when you open up that zone to allow retail, then, then you need to do a comparison between the other commercial zone that allows retail, because that opens up the whole zone to allow all, the full breadth of retail. So you'd have to consider not just this type of retail, but any retail that could potentially go in there. And it would really be changing the characteristics of what's currently allowed. There's a fairly limited amount of uses that are allowed in that zoning district, and the characteristics of them, when we speak about medical, are more medical offices, which is somewhat different maybe than what we're talking about. So we'd have to really think a little bit more about the characteristic of the change in that zoning district before, you know, just changing it.
And they seem to me to be primarily residential, but that may not be the case.
Exactly. I mean, if you look at these two CL zones in the out, you know, that aren't really in the buffers, Deer Park Villa is deeply into Fairfax and do we want traffic there? And the other, the other one is, you know, on the border of and is resident. We just allowed a house to be built across the street from there. So I don't see those as being good locations for retail outlets. I see those as maybe, you know, hidden delivery spots, but not retail outlets. Those two zones are too deep and too residential for that.
So your answer, Phil, is no?
Right. Oh, I think, I think the reason we allow it in this, this CL zone that's within the buffer there is because it's the grandfathered use, right? I believe.
And Norma, were you a yea or nay on that?
I agree with both Commissioners Green and Rodriguez that it is not apparent that those two CL zones would be appropriate for the full range of, of retail uses.
So Michelle, are you able to say yes or no tonight, or you are unsure on that? On having retail in the CL?
My opinion is unchanged.
Which is no? Got it. Okay, so it looks like the majority is a no for changing, for not changing CL on that. Parking. So that's at the bottom of page five on the draft?
And at the beginning, I think there was a mention that there is, one of the options here may be sort of going above and beyond what we'd require of other businesses. Is that other delivery businesses or other retail?
Let me, let me take a look at that. I, I think that the primary focus, or when you look at the retail, that would be no change. In terms of the delivery component, I need to find the.
Well, on your, on your retail, you had the optional, since retail may have a delivery component, to have a additional spot per delivery vehicle was the optional piece to that.
Yeah, it appears that we, for the industrial uses, you're correct that the additional for the delivery vehicle, for the industrial, it's one space per two employees. So for a delivery business, it would be detached.
Plus, plus vehicle spaces.
If your commission so recommended.
So if we look at the retail, which is three spaces for the first 500 feet and then additional space per each additional 500 square feet, do you find that sufficient for, for a retail establishment?
May I opine?
And then the optional would be, assuming that retail can also have a delivery component, would you require an additional space for each delivery vehicle?
I would recommend that the parking standards be as they are written without the optional phrases.
For both retail and delivery only, or just the retail?
For both. Section C1, I and II should be as written without the optional language.
Which is the additional space per delivery vehicle.
Phil, are you ready on that one?
Yes, um, you know, there might be another way to, to look at this, for delivery especially, and that is to have, instead of a space, have a loading zone. If you, if you have a delivery, you know, obviously it'll have a sidewalk and a, a road front of some kind, or, you know, or we can just make them have an off-street space. So I'm not quite sure. So mine's more of a question than a response to this, is, you know, are we thinking in terms of, you know, loading zones? Are we thinking in terms of off-street parking when we're talking about these spaces?
I think if we're dealing with larger businesses, we would be looking at loadings, the loading zone question. I've seen that referenced in other businesses, certainly some of the larger operations in East Bay with lots of deliveries. You start to get into that, and it remains to be seen how the, the wholesale delivery to these retail establishments would take place. But part of that would be subsumed in the traffic study that they would have to conduct, so we could sort that out. At this time, we're not looking into the loading zone aspect.
But the assumption, I think, would be, and again, you know, we're talking a 1,500-square-foot facility, but if you have, like for the delivery only, you have delivery vehicles, where are those delivery vehicles gonna be parked when they're not in service? So let's say overnight, you know, at that location, would you want parking, off-street parking within that for the delivery vehicles? I think is perhaps some of the thinking there.
I, I'm sorry, but I think they meet the standards for development of their, their zone throughout the city, as every other retail business does, which seems fair to me. I would not additionally restrict them.
Phil?
I would leave storefront retailers with the same parking requirements per square foot we have now. But delivery, you know, if they have delivery operations or if there's delivery going on, I would like to see an off-street parking place for that, you know, vehicle that's temporarily pulling in, loading or unloading and pulling out, because it can, one of the odd things why I'm thinking this way is vehicles pulling in and out of streets is the most dangerous, was the number-one accident they had on their automatic, you know, auto-driven car program in the DMV, pulling out of parking spaces on a street was the number-one accident. They're using insurance statistics. So I would like to see a specification here under I, I would not have the optional language. I would just leave it as is for retail. Under double I, I would have the optional language, but I would specify that it's an off-street parking space.
Through the chair, you don't agree that one space for two employees is sufficient for a delivery service? You're, you're, you're asking for an additional off-street or somewhere space on top of the one space for two employees?
Well, you know, it depends who, what those two employees are doing. If you have two employees there all the time to, to help load and unload trucks, cars or whatever for a delivery service, and another person who's there, you know, with their delivery vehicle, there has to be a space off-road, I think, for the delivery vehicle, no matter how many other spaces they provide.
Just as, one comment is, if you're gonna have delivery, it doesn't really matter whether it's an adjunct to a retail business or a delivery business in terms of the demand for a parking space for that delivery vehicle. If you're delivering, you need a spa, well, you don't, it's up to your commission to determine whether you need a space for the delivery vehicle, but you will have a delivery vehicle. And that's gonna have to be parked somewhere.
Right, and, and of course, if, if the current use in the CL zone that's grandfathered in becomes also a delivery facility, they're not on the street, so they don't have this issue. There's plenty of parking where they are.
Mimi?
Well, I feel like we're making assumptions about delivery vehicles. I mean, Pizza Parlor doesn't have a dedicated parking spot, and it has delivery. So do the deliverers take their cars home and just put the sign on the top of the car that says, "I'm delivering pizza" when they come to work? I mean, so I, I feel like we're making some assumptions here. And again, I would not require extra special requirements over and above what we would any other business, just because this is cannabis. So if a delivery business in town has to have a certain number of parking spaces for their own delivery vehicles, and I question whether that's appropriate if, if their employees are using their own cars, you know, I, I don't think we ought to be restricting the, the cannabis industry more than we are other industries in town. And I, I feel that way both about the parking requirements for the retail locations as well as delivery.
So, um, does that also include the three spaces per the first 500 feet and then an additional space outside of the optional delivery vehicle space? How do you feel about the?
I wouldn't go above and beyond what we require for any other business. So I wouldn't limit the space, because we're limiting the space and apparently we don't limit everybody else in space.
Neither optional language on either of those.
So what is the, just for clarification, because I know we've, we've done this at a prior meeting, the 300, ah, 300, the three spaces for the first 500 feet and then an additional space per the next two 500 feet? What is that based on? And I know that is similar to what the dispensary has already as a part of theirs, but that is based on a certain type of business?
That's for retail businesses.
All right, okay.
So for clarification.
Retail and personal service stores, three spaces for the first 500 square feet of gross floor area and one space for each additional 500 square feet thereafter.
So as far as the retail parking requirement for this, this is no different than any other retail requirement in town. So the only difference there is the requirement, the optional requirement for one space for a delivery vehicle. So Mimi, do you agree with the three spaces?
Yeah, if it's consistent.
Just not the optional?
Yeah, I, I only agree if the optional is also an optional for every other retail business that had a delivery component.
Which we've looked, and it does not.
So for clarification, if you had a 1,500-square-foot facility, then they would need six spaces. Right?
Correct.
How many of our retail establishments, just off the top of your head, come anywhere near meeting the parking requirements in our code?
Judging by the hubbleu over the loss, temporary loss of parkade parking, not many.
So Michelle?
I kind of agree with Mimi.
I kind of agree with Mimi.
What was that?
I, you know, I kind of agree with Mimi, except for what I'm concerned about is that we haven't talked about square footage yet. So if we have a 1,500 square foot, all delivery, or does that 1,500 square feet apply to all deliveries? I'm not even sure anymore, but then, then how many vehicles could they possibly have? What happens if somebody comes in and says, "I want to do 50 vehicles"? You know, how are they limited?
Well, I guess, I guess, I guess they wouldn't be able to, would they?
Keep in mind that we will be likely looking at operating plans for individual businesses when we're evaluating different proposals.
And traffic analysis.
And part of that will be how they sync up with their business plan versus their facilities such as parking, so.
And this is where the criteria come in, if they, maybe we add Fairfax's character as a criteria.
If it's a Costco offshoot, then maybe we don't need them in town.
But then we wouldn't be able to limit them.
So, Michelle, what do you feel about the delivery aspect of it?
Well, I think I'm asking questions, but I'm not getting my answer.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, well, then, I, then, okay, since I'm not getting the answer, I would say C1I with the option.
So you're saying, for, for retail, the three for the first 500 feet, and the additional one for 500 feet, plus the optional delivery, and then for delivery only, you're going one for two, plus the optional delivery vehicle one, right?
That's not what Mimi suggested, is it?
I'm trying to find out what Michelle wants.
I don't believe that delivery only is industrial, so that's the first thing that I conflict with, and so I don't think they should have parking for employees. I think it should only be for delivery vehicles.
Well, that's a good point. You know, there could be, there could be a compromise here, then, of saying that, doing what Mimi said, not restricting it any more than re, any other retail parking, but having, but saying that, reserving for delivery businesses, one of those spaces that's required for retail must be for a delivery driver. In other words, the employees can't take it up, it's just would be marked delivery only or something.
So recognizing that, what I think I'm hearing is, apply the same standards we have for the retail, but with no additional requirements, but parse out one of those spaces and maybe mark it for delivery vehicles, vehicles only.
That's just an idea I'm thinking of.
So, so what you're saying, then, is to have retail and delivery have the same parking requirements?
No.
Yes, but if, just have the same parking requi, so a cannabis business, retail business, will have the same parking requirements as any other retail business in Fairfax, but if there's a delivery component to that cannabis retail business, one of the spots required by our standard parking requirements must be reserved for the delivery vehicle.
Or, or if it's a strictly delivery business, the one required spot must be used by the delivery car.
Let me just weigh in on this one. I think one of the concerns that we would have with retail is that you're going to have a lot of customers. So, my thought on that is, you know, I don't know that the parking would be, even with, potentially with three spaces per 500 feet, and then, you know, the additional two spaces would be sufficient, but I think we need to make sure that we at least meet the requirement that we have for any other retail business in town as far as the parking, based on the size, so that, to me, that's the, you know, the, for a 1,500 square foot facility, retail store, it's five spaces for that store. I mean, I can't see taking that below what we theoretically require for other retail stores, to make one of those for a delivery vehicle. Then you're taking away parking, which could be an impact on, on the community.
And so if you had a 1,500 square foot delivery business, does that mean they're only going to have one parking space under what we're talking about right now? Because then, I don't understand the production level of a 1,500 square foot delivery-only facility.
What this, what this is saying is that they would have one parking space for each two employees, and then the optional piece of that is a space for the delivery vehicle. So if your delivery business has four employees in there doing stuff, you're going to have two spaces for those employees, and then the optional piece of that would be, they're going to need to have potentially a delivery vehicle that, if nothing else, might be parked there overnight, or whatever, so you want to accommodate that delivery vehicle. Do we have any delivery-only businesses in town now? See, we, right. As far as we can surmise, we don't?
No, we have delivery businesses that come into town from other places to deliver things, but we don't have any that have their offices here.
Right, so that would be a, a unique?
Through the chair.
Keep in mind, we will likely have delivery businesses operating, I think, up to four, but I, I could be wrong in that, but in Sinneford, that they have changed their regulations, or are in the process of changing their regulations to specifically allow that. So, Marin County will have daylighted delivery businesses five miles down the road.
Through the chair, what is the likelihood that a delivery-only business will occupy 1,500 square feet at today's market rate?
No, it's being used as an example, at least by me.
Understand, but we have a, we have a maximum of 1,500 square feet for retail, do we not?
Correct.
So then, is the 1,500 foot also a maximum for delivery businesses?
Correct.
It's that size of facility, it's at the top of page six, right underneath the option for the delivery only, it says size of the facility, so that's for both the retail and the delivery.
Based on commission input. So, Michelle, were you yes on the, the regular parking, and yes on the options for both? I think?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, for me, I would want the parking as stated for both retail and delivery, plus the additional vehicle spaces. You guys got that?
Actually, to confirm through the chair, so it, it sounds like there are three votes to, to include the optional language, to keep the standards for storefront retailers would meet the retail standard, delivery-only businesses would meet the industrial standard, and there are three votes to require the extra space for the delivery vehicle. Is that correct? Commissioner Green, Commissioner Rodriguez, and Chair Swift.
Well, see, I'm not, I'm not either of those positions, really. I, I think we should have, I agree with Mimi in, in the idea that we should not have more onerous parking requirements for these businesses than other retail businesses, but for delivery businesses, I disagree with the chair, I'm sorry. I think we have to reserve a spot for that delivery vehicle off-street. That's what I'm saying. So it's kind of different from the other guys, and, and it's not, it's not, so it's not a yes or a no, it's a gray item, sorry.
How does one, I don't know how one reserves an off-street spot.
Ooh, in the legal profession, it's a split opinion.
There are no off-street spots.
There's no consensus, and there's no majority.
It's, it's 909, can we move on to the next item?
We may want to loop back to this after we talk about the number of businesses and the type of businesses, because just-
Well, that happens to be our next item.
Right. Just anecdotally, the, the people that we're talking to are mainly interested in retail storefront, not delivery businesses, so, just throwing that out there.
We'll take a break after we get through the number of businesses. That ought to move that along.
Can we take a break?
Can we do it after we do, because then we'll be into the business permit piece. So, page six of the draft. So the options here, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, is to put a limit, like one number, that can be composed of any of the choices. So the first one there, under-
You, you're skipping number three.
Are you going to do alternative?
No, I'm doing limitation on the number above it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So limitation on number, so the first option there is, there shall be no more than X number of cannabis retailers at any time, whether it's storefront, delivery, whether medical use, adult use. So what that is doing is just saying, you know, we're going to have a cap, and whatever those three are at one time in the town is how it's going to be, so that's one option.
Clarification, though, through the chair on that one option. It says we can have businesses that can be a storefront retail, a delivery only, or a medical use, or adult use or both. That, that could actually mean three delivery only. It doesn't necessarily mean one of each, so it isn't clear.
Correct. That's, but that's, your first option is just to put, you know, a number out there that can be comprised of any of the types of businesses we allow in town. So that's three. Then the alternative to that is to break it down, whether you want to break it down to how many storefront retailers, or delivery-only retailers you have within the town at one time. So it's either just going with a number, and seeing how the applications come in for that, or saying that you want to determine how many delivery you're going to have, how many retailers you're going to have. And then your third piece of this that you're going to talk about is whether or not the dispensary that we have currently, you want to fold under those two options. Did I get that right?
Well stated.
Thank you.
I would vote to fold our dispensary into whatever number we come up with.
And what about the other piece of that? Do you want to just put a number out there?
Let's just deal with the dispensary, to get that out of the way. Is it included in our number? And then we go from there, because that already gives us one medical and one delivery, adult recreational delivery. Let's decide, let's decide on that one first.
Well, that's an interesting statement, actually. I've been saying two, and number three, and not the alternative, two cannabis retailers of any use, but then the question is just raised now, what happens if one facility has delivery and medical? Let me think about that a minute, come back, come back to me.
Yeah, one of the tricky questions is, as far as the state is concerned, there, as though there are two separate businesses existing side by side, since nobody in the medical side of it is allowed to go into the delivery side. So the question would be, does Fairfax want to treat that as one business for purposes of assigning an overall number?
But I thought we were required, didn't you just say we're required to treat it as two? One delivery and one medical?
The state is treating it as two, but Fairfax can treat it any way they want.
That's why that paragraph, I think, is written as a separate language to apply, and might argue to not include that one in the number. You know what I mean?
So Norma, you want to include that into the, whatever numbers we come up with? Yes?
I would say yes.
Phil?
Well, I'm sticking with two, but I'm thinking that it should be two based on two kind of entities. Right, two locations, rather than if one business has two licenses, that's it. Okay, so I'm, because of competition, and, you know, fair competition, although I kind of frankly think it's not going to happen here, but two is still my number, thank you.
Okay, but the question was, do you want to include the dispensary in whatever number comes up?
And include the-
Okay, we're going to go just with the dispensary piece first. Mimi?
No.
I agree with Phil.
Which was, yes, right?
Which was two total.
Just answer, just address the, Norma brought up the question of, of just addressing whether the dispensary should be included in what we come up with above.
Yes.
And then, Phil, you were counting the dispensary as one.
Right.
Michelle, you counted the dispensary as one, and I would also count the medical dispensary with its-
May I jump in here?
Go ahead.
No?
Can I vote first?
Yeah.
Okay. I would vote to include the dispensary in whatever numbers we come up with.
Okay, Mimi.
I would recommend rewriting the limitation on the number, so that you address each of the uses separately. I think it's really confusing to lump them all together. I would say there shall be no more than blank number of storefront retail locations, no more than three delivery-only retailers, and no more than three medical, or, and I'm just throwing three in there because I don't think there should be a limit, but I'm putting that in there because I am looking at the reality of my fellow commissioners, thinking we should have a limit. So I'm simply suggesting that format-wise, we should express them all separately.
So, we've thought a lot about this, and one of the things that troubles me is taking the separate functions of a business and counting them as different things. I think, frankly, that we're going to reach a point fairly quickly when we have adult use and medical, and it's, it's all going to be one. I can see that there would be separate delivery-only type of places, but I, I always envision when you're talking about a limitation on number, that you're talking about discrete locations.
Well, maybe what we could do, then, is make the first number apply to storefront retail, or any combination of delivery and medical with storefront retail, adult use. So that way, you're covering the retail that has a delivery component, as well as the retail adult use that has a medical component, and that being a number. But then you also have a separate provision relating to your cap for delivery only, and then another cap potentially for medical only. So the first one, I think, would capture the combo scenario that you're talking about. Would that be a solution to the issue that you've raised?
If I may.
If I may, that's what alternative two is intending to do. So, I think one of the issues that we're facing is storefront retailers, as part of their state license, are authorized to engage in delivery. So, trying to separate that, for a storefront retailer that is engaging in delivery, trying to separate that out and say that's two numbers or functions is, it's, that's, I think, creating a lot of complication. So, that's why my preference would be to talk about, and also the definitions of storefront retailers do, in this ordinance, reflect the fact that delivery may or may not be a part of that storefront operation. So, I think my recommendation would be to say storefront retailers, whether medical use, adult use, or combination, and then separately, if you want to have a carve-out for the delivery-only retailers. Another option, which I think we had in a prior draft, was to have a separate carve-out for medical storefronts, recognizing that those medical storefronts would also be permitted to engage in delivery pursuant to their state license. But in the kind of attempt to try and start streamlining options here, that's why it was combined into either one overall cap for any type of storefront, or, excuse me, any type of cannabis retailer, or do you, or pose the alternative, do we want to have separate carve-outs for storefront versus delivery only?
So, I'm going to go first. I'm going to go first this time. I'm going to go with a limitation on number. And when we're talking about, you know, kind of locations is what I see it as. I would go, there should be no more than three locations. So, three retailers, whatever they are, whatever they come in, and just one, three, which depending on what you see comes into, you know, comes in to apply, could be retail with delivery, could be delivery only. I'm looking at it from just location-wise in town and not, you know, cutting out, well, we only want two deliveries in one store, we want one. I think that's, makes it far too complicated. And I think just having a number on it for cannabis business locations at this point is easier and workable and including the dispensary in that number.
As a clarification, the dispensary and the delivery-
As one.
As one. Okay.
Michelle?
Two total, including the existing.
Two locations.
Regardless of what they are. Mimi?
I don't think we should limit the number at all, but if we are going to limit it, I would prefer the alternative approach. I would go with the maximum number that people would put in those options. I would add, under the alternative, item three back in for medical storefronts. So, if you went with the limitation on number above, my number would probably be nine or more. If you went with the alternative, item one, three or more, item two, three or more, item three, three or more.
Which one was item three?
Well, that was the one they took out that was medical storefront only.
Okay. Phil?
I agree with legal counsel. We're going to see the end of the medical marijuana program, perhaps. You know, when you could buy Sudafed over the counter, they stopped prescribing it. I mean, it's just one of those things. I think on this situation, we should limit the number to two. And instead of saying cannabis retailers, we should say cannabis retail locations and leave it a little more open, perhaps, so it's either delivery, combination. So, if we get, if we end up with two retail slash delivery facilities, so be it. And we kind of have four operations that way. But that's how I see it, is I agree with legal counsel that we should have it retail locations, you know, rather than retail operations. So, two of those. And by that, just to be really clear again, they could be combination, delivery and retail, delivery and medical, just medical, just retail, whatever they are.
Norma?
Just a point of clarification, please, before I opine on this. When we say retail, we're talking buds only and no microbusinesses because we've still, we've disallowed the whole microbusiness scenario, right?
We're not, we're not talking about a vertical operation. We're not, also not talking about bud only. We're talking about cannabis products. They're not manufactured.
So, that would include, like Mimi's idea of somebody rolling some joints for a client?
That's a separate issue that has to do with the definitions.
Oh, okay.
And hopefully, we'll get there.
Okay.
Just consider it as cannabis products.
Okay. That being said, then, I agree with two cannabis locations, including the current medicinal delivery service as one of those two.
So, that, I believe we have three commissioners voting for the two cannabis locations option in any combination of business, including the existing dispensary slash delivery operation.
No, my vote was for including the dispensary, but having a total of three. So, potentially, you could have the dispensary, you could have a retail, and you could have a delivery.
Okay. So, it is three, three one one, bro.
Say that again.
It's three of one and one and one of the others.
So, you guys, you got that? So, we can take a break now. Okay. We ready to continue? Staff's ready?
Can I ask an overall question, I think especially addressed to legal counsel? Can we regulate businesses to the, because we're about to go into business regulation, I think, too. Can we regulate businesses to the extent of what they have in stock to sell, such as products with scents, flavors, THC percentages, that type of thing?
So, under Prop 64, there's specific authority for local jurisdictions to adopt health and safety regulations under, I think it's section 26201 of the Business and Professions Code. And so, while the extent of that provision is untested, we believe it would be allowed to regulate things such as the types of products that are being sold, as, because there are similar authority such as flavored tobacco products. So, that's a type of authority that cities have outside of cannabis. And because we have that specific statutory authority, we think that we probably could do so here as well.
Okay. Thank you.
So, I'm not sure how you want to do the business permit, if you just want to go page by page or-
Could we, I'm sorry. There is another issue before we get to chapter five.
Please.
Which I raised earlier on, and I'd like to discuss with the commission, which is the definition of cannabis product and how the definition of cannabis cultivation, which is on page one, includes processing, rolling, storing-
I'm sorry, are you in seventeen or five? You're back in seventeen?
Yeah. Before we went to five, I wanted to finish up with this issue on seventeen.
So, attachment one, page one?
Yes. So, here we have a definition of cannabis cultivation. And one of the terms that is included in this definition, or it says, "For the purposes of commercial cannabis cultivation, the term cannabis cultivation also includes," and this is what I want to draw your attention to, "processing, rolling, storing, packaging, and labeling of non-manufactured cannabis products." And we also have a definition a little further down of cannabis manufacturing. And this definition also talks about a cannabis product. So, there's a difference in B and E. B talks about non-manufactured cannabis product. So, I'm thinking this is a flower, this is a bud, this is the leaf that is being rolled into the joint, that has not been processed into a concentrate. And if you look at the definition of cannabis product on the next page, it has undergone a process whereby the plant material has been transformed into a concentrate. And because our proposed legislation has a provision that says if it's not authorized, it's prohibited, I would like to add another definition in this section of non-manufactured cannabis product so that we can differentiate between non-manufactured cannabis products as referred to in cultivation, which I would intend to be non-concentrate. We're talking flower, we're talking bud, we're talking rolling joints, and specifically allow the retail establishments and delivery establishments to engage in the rolling of non-manufactured or otherwise engage in the packaging or labeling of non-manufactured, meaning the leaf, cannabis product as opposed to the concentrate. And I'm wondering what the other commissioners feel about this.
We-
Go ahead.
There may be a legal issue associated with that, and our council's looking that up. But before we, the commission discusses that.
Are you ready to speak to that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, section 5412 of the Bureau of Cannabis Control Regulations-
Can you speak up a little bit?
Sorry about that. Yeah. Get it closer. Section 5412 of the Bureau of Cannabis Control Regulations actually prohibits packaging and labeling by a retailer and requires a licensed retailer to not accept, possess, or sell cannabis goods that are not packaged as they will be sold at final sale. A licensed retailer shall not package or label cannabis goods. The only thing they're allowed to do is put a barcode on the final product.
So, cannabis goods, that's a whole nother term, it sounds like. And-
What I would interject is, the, this gets into the microbusiness and a vertical business for future discussion because, for example, we believe it's Marin Alliance's intent to be able to engage in those type of activities. But per the current code, they cannot do that as a retailer only. So, for future consideration, they've expressed their desire to package, which my understanding is that they might be allowed to do that with the proper vertically integrated company. But right now, they can't do that.
All right. Well, I didn't look up the definition of cannabis goods, so I don't have any information about what that means in front of me. And I can't opine on this question without that information.
Yeah. The Bureau of Cannabis Control Regulations also introduced the more umbrella term of cannabis goods, which under section 5,000 subdivision F means cannabis, including dried flour and products containing cannabis. So, I think it's intended to be more of an umbrella term that includes both the dried plant and the manufactured products.
So, just to be perfectly clear, if I may, a retail, non-microbusiness storefront can sell buds that they can package up somehow? No?
They're only selling prepackaged products.
Okay. They can only sell prepackaged products, meaning buds or joints, rolled joints, or baked cookies? That isn't included under the microbusiness? That's okay, just as a retailer?
As a, as long as they're prepackaged brownies or manufactured, other manufactured products, yes, the retailer can sell them. But they cannot be packaging and creating them on-site themselves.
Don't need the microbusiness license to sell the packaged joints and baked goods that they get?
Correct. If they're just selling packaged joints and packaged goods, they don't-
Of, of non-concentrated, non-extracted, non-CBD, THD vapors, pens, and all that kind of stuff, right?
All of it, as long as it's prepackaged and came from a licensed distributor, then there's, they are able to sell under their retailer license. But they cannot package or create any of those products under the retail license.
I didn't realize that. Thank you.
So, to be clear, a retailer cannot have a box up front of loose rolled joints that aren't packaged, but they rolled for sale at all? Thanks.
Michelle?
So, before we go on to the business one, then can we talk about where would we limit the THC and where would we limit the product labeling, marketing for children?
Staff, you want to address that?
Well, if the town were to adopt those standards, I think we'd put those in chapter 5.56 as a business regulation, wouldn't be a zoning standard.
Okay. We ready to go on to five? So, I don't know how you want to, if you want to do this page by page or how you want to address this.
Sorry, what page are you on?
The first one, attachment two. If, on the third page, it has alternatives there, but I believe those alternatives are taken with the decisions we made in the previous zoning, correct?
Correct. We'll sync those up with the zoning ordinance.
So, does anybody have any questions or comments? I'm going to just do this up through sections, so up through 5.56.080. So, that's like, maybe next time you can put the page numbers on them, like fifth page in or so.
Through the chair, if I may.
Sure.
Just because it is getting a little bit late, I think probably the main focus that would be most helpful for us moving forward in what we, in terms of what we bring back to the next meeting, is just to provide, if the planning commission would provide feedback on the overall application and scoring process that we've laid out. We can go back to the slides.
Well, maybe, because I think one of the things that folks have talked about is we don't have what those components are that we're going to evaluate on. So, that makes it kind of difficult to address some of those issues. But I did in reading through, and maybe I'll just kind of ask my questions that I had. maybe I'll just kind of ask my questions that I had to start. So on 556.090 D3, where it talks about records, and that the business would maintain current records, my question was, what are the state requirements for a business to have in relation to records? Because this just says, you know, you're going to have current records. It doesn't say, you know, for how long, or it doesn't get real specific. And I didn't know what the state requirements would be, that this may just be...
Yes. So the state regulations, and I can pull up the exact language if you'd like, but the state has detailed requirements on keeping personnel records, and those personnel records are supposed to be kept under the state rules for seven years. This item three is a register of all employees, and this is more of a pared-down, just list of who currently works for the business. And I've seen this used a lot with massage businesses, where there's a lot, there can be, where the enforcing agency wants to have like a handy way to just know who's working for a particular business.
So, and throughout this, because I had a question on another section, of state and local law violations require notification to police of any arrest of people associated with the business. In one section of this, you address volunteers, but that's not consistent throughout the business permit regulations. So for example, the records, the current register of all employees shall be maintained. It doesn't mention volunteers. In another area, we had volunteers, but it wasn't consistent when we addressed those associated with the business. And I wasn't quite sure if that was an oversight.
I can correct that.
Okay. Then 556.09013. The section says, "The permatee shall be responsible for all violations of this chapter." And the MAU, CRSA, or its implementing regulations, whether committed by the permatee, its owners, or any employee or agent of the permatee, which viol, oh, okay, that was the one, where, which violations occur in or about the premises of the commercial cannabis business, whether or not said violations occur within the permit, permit holder's presence. And that, let's see. I guess the sentence in there didn't quite make sense, so if you just take a look at that, maybe there were some words mixed on that. You had a section on expirations, and you said an active permit, a permit shall expire if not in active use for a period of six months. And I was wondering if you could define what active use meant, because I could, and I'm trying to get the sense of when we issue a permit versus the state, if there's a situation where we issue a permit, but then because we've got design review or other building things that need to be done, the person couldn't actually start their business until those things were accomplished. And I just wasn't quite sure what active use meant when a permit is issued, because there didn't seem to be any way to extend that.
We can look at fleshing that out.
Okay.
I guess on the design review aspect, I think that should not be an issue here because we're contemplating that this whole, that the design review permits, all the discretionary permits should be part of the initial application, or, you know, be part of the application package and approved together. So we're not, we're hoping, anticipating that design review issues aren't going to be delaying the use of the permit.
So when, when in this process would the permit be issued, I guess is my question, to then start the active use piece, to start tolling that?
Well, I could say that if there is construction involved, where you look at the interplay between planning applications, for example, design review, leading to building permit applications, there's time periods for when those go inactive and are considered no longer valid. But we could also, with respect to the timing of the manager's issuance of the business permit, put a proviso that says this has to be acted upon by either applying for the building permit if necessary, or opening the business if that's not applicable within a certain time period. And then if the business is no longer active, i.e., it's closed for a certain period.
Right. I assume the, the purpose was if somebody had an ongoing business and then just stopped it for a period of time, that you'd want to pull that. But I was concerned about if somebody goes through the process, and they get their approvals, but they have, so maybe they get issued their permit, which is a piece I wasn't clear on. But then they still have to make building modifications or whatever. Is it like a occupancy permit in a sense? I didn't want the permatee to be hampered by having to go through that and having that permit considered not active while they were still getting their business up and running, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I don't think you're going to run into that problem.
Okay.
As long as somebody is actively and diligently working towards completion or activation or opening, I think what we're talking about is abandonment of the business for a period of time. And that would give the town the opportunity to say, you no longer are operating a business, and, you know, you're taking that, however many licenses we issue, or permits we issued, up. And, you know, the idea behind those is if you're going to have that permit, you're going to be operating the business.
Anyone else have any comments on this?
Well, I have, on lots of comments on this, this whole section here. Under, let's see here, 556.060, I would like to possibly add a 16. You know, these aren't, these are just suggestions, sort of with a question mark in them. I noticed that BCC Regulation 5017 talks about substantially related offenses and criteria for rehabilitation. And I think that might be an additional possible 16 there with saying something like proof of compliance with BCC 5017. As an additional requirement. That's just a question mark suggestion. And then I, and then I have others. I mean, I have a lot of stuff here. Fifty, 556.070, under A, Phase One, Criminal History, where we say, in line two, "Upon receipt of completed application," da-da-da, with the Town's Municipal Code, and I thought we should just say, "and state licensing regulations" there. Then under three of that same section, "Each applicant shall submit to the Chief of Police." I thought there was a little ambiguity in the second sentence. "The applicant, owners, and managers shall," so I would reword it, "the applicant, owners, and managers shall submit fingerprints to live scan procedures," rather than "shall be responsible for submitting them." To me, that leaves a little vagary there. If they need to submit fingerprints, we should just say "shall do so." And then after FBI in parentheses, I would add, "or other applicable agencies." I mean, one never knows. Let's see, 556.070.
Before you go on, Phil.
Okay.
On that same one on three, if you're going to add after FBI, the first time it shows up, you want to include or other applicable agencies in the last sentence of that paragraph, too?
We could do that, wouldn't hurt.
So as a matter of clarification, it's not a given. Right now, we can't do that. We can only get information at the state. We can't get national. We'll have to go through a process to apply.
So then we don't want to have FBI?
And we may or may not get it.
Yeah.
Right. So, and we don't get to see it. PD just comments to us. So I was just saying, maybe we should modify this, and then we could always change it if we ever get that DOJ permission. Because the council has to take action, then we submit it. San Morfello is trying to do that. They haven't heard back. We have no idea how long it takes to get that approval.
So maybe we should cross out FBI and say, right there, other applicable agencies.
Sorry. If we're a little more generic, we know we can get state. Let's just be generic. And when we get that, we can, then we'll get national.
Right. I mean, it may be, it may be accessible at some point in the future. So we don't want to just limit ourselves, though, to DOJ, I think. So then above, the next page, on the top, number four, it says, "Pre-screening decisions are not appealable." I just wonder if that's okay, legal counsel? Question. You know, or is the, is that process, the pre-screening process, intended to be sort of a hard and fast, black and white, too bad thing?
It is intended to be a very black and white, yes or no, up or down type of thing. It's not intended to be a discretionary thing. So I'd like to look, let me look at it, because if there's a possibility of there was a mistake or something like that, you know, we need to look at that.
Yeah, that happened actually with a friend at work the other day, and, you know, they had, she'd applied for a raise, and the government system, where you submitted your resume, took one from 10 years ago, and then said she was in that applicable because it didn't recognize, like, the computer system didn't recognize her current resume. So, you know, I'm just saying, I think we should keep in a process if there's a mistake.
Okay, thank, yeah, that's, that's true, Mimi. Absolutely. Then on number three, B, Phase Two, number three. So whenever you have, you know, in contests and things, you have to have a very clear application period. So I'm just concerned that maybe we need to just be, sort of process-wise, rather than language-wise, we need to be clear up to the minute, what the termination of that application period, you know, midnight of certain date, instead of just a certain date, right? Otherwise, we're into, you know, the sweepstakes issues kind of thing, which this is sort of like. And then under number five, I had, where it says, oh, no, sorry, C, "Issuance of commercial cannabis business," see, I really did go over this stuff. Just was late. "Issuance of commercial cannabis business permit does not create a land use entitlement, et cetera." And then that, that section ends with, "have, have been complied with," and the town verifies that it's complied with. I would just like to add, "and the town verifies its, its compliance." And then on the next page, under 556.080, under C, I don't, I'm inclined to add a five, one, two, three, four, five, and that is sort of the, the common law felonies. You know, they're like murder, and mayhem, and things that have nothing to do with, I mean, if we're going to list convictions here, we're not listing murder, we're not listing rape, we're not, you know...
Well, I think murder is kind of violent, though, right? And use of force or violence. I would think rape is force and violence.
Absolutely.
So what, I don't understand why you think rape and murder aren't on that list.
Any offense using the use of force or violence upon the person of another, I just think we should add a five that says, "the common law felonies." That's my sentence, "the common law felonies."
Well, I was going to raise this one because I'm concerned about, number one, when we're talking about drug offenses and people who have served time and paid their debt to society. And I think I have some concerns about limiting people's abilities to carry on a business after they've paid their debt to society. I'm, I'm more inclined to go along with the offense involving the use of force or violence, although, you know, the same question arises when we're talking about people that have paid their debt to society. What is the purpose of our limiting, you know, really, what is the purpose of this criminal prohibition? Yeah, offenses involving the sales of cannabis to a minor or use of a minor to distribute cannabis, I will totally go along with that one. But I guess for the other ones, I'm starting to feel like when people are arrested and serve time, and then they're released, you know, they deserve a kind of a ability to carry on with a new leaf.
Right. Well, earlier I suggested that we look at Regulation 5017, which talks about substantially related offenses and criteria for rehabilitation. That's, that, I have a note here, that that also should be under, you know, your concern, is, is number one there, that, you know, the regulations allow for, so I think we need to maybe have a six, you know, five being felonies, and maybe a six is bringing in that regulation here to, that addresses your issue, is the...
I don't know how you address my issue, by adding yet another item to this. You're talking about one, two, three, four, and now adding a five and a six? I'm talking about deleting some of them.
Right. Well, rather than doing that, I think we should keep it the way it is, but add, you know, based on Regulation, what was that?
5017.
5017. So maybe there should be a D there instead of five. 5017 allowing for, I mean, it's what you basically said, allowing for the, how did the regulation put it, criteria for rehabilitation.
Commissioner Green, let me ask a question. If, if 5017 does relate to cannabis-related offenses, that would seem to cover that. But I guess Commissioner Newton was suggesting that if there's other drug-related offenses, and they...
Right. So 5017 talks about substantially related offenses, and, I mean, maybe legal counsel can just kind of work the language into a D there. I didn't mean six. I should have, I misspoke.
Well, another possibility, too, for some of these listed under C, is there could be perhaps, you know, having a length of time. So if you've had certain felonies, but they have been over a period of time, you know, like five years ago, 10 years ago, or whatever, that that would be something that could be looked at in here. Just throwing that out there.
I think the question is, is how comfortable is the commission with somebody who has a serious criminal offense in their background? And, and so you're suggesting that perhaps if they, there's been a period of time since that, they've paid their debt, et cetera?
Well, to Mimi's point...
Well, to Mimi's point of, of doing that, I would just give consideration, if you wanted to consider that, to, to putting it in to an age thing. So, you know, if, if they've paid their debt to society and been clean for a period of time, I mean, just something to look at from that perspective.
Are there any other businesses in town that we would regulate in this manner? Do we require that massage therapists not be arrested for prostitution? Is that one of the things? Really? We do that?
Other places, I'm not sure about, we even allow.
I'm asking about Fairfax.
I don't even, do we even allow massage parlors, or anything like that?
We have massage therapy.
Let me ask a question. What does the ABC do with liquor licenses in this regard?
If you were a bootlegger?
I mean, that may be something to look at for a comparison. I don't know.
Yeah, well, we would have to look at that. If you want, what you're trying to get at, I think, is you're trying to give an out for a rehabilitated person after a number of years?
Yeah. Well, I'm not even sure about the number of years, frankly. As soon as that person gets out of jail, and they're done, I mean, I think our society says people are entitled to move on with their lives after they've paid that debt to society. So, that's a serious question for me.
Okay. So, let me ask this. So, in the state regs, they don't do live scans, as far as I can tell. You self-certify if you had a conviction, what it's for, and then it goes further, and I'm saying we do this, but then it says it has the statement of rehabilitation for each conviction. So, you're pretty much making the statement that says, contains evidence, you like the business to consider them, and then the bureau decides on a case-by-case basis. So, how I see this working is, one is, assuming they're honest, and they self-certify, then the bureau may boot them out. They'll never get a license. And then, if they're not honest, and they don't get checked on, then we come here, and if they were honest, and the bureau gave them a statement of rehab, under ours, if they have one of these offenses, then they'd be out. Unless we're saying, if they have, if the bureau allows them to have a license, and they've listed one of these offenses, are we saying that we should let them have a permit?
It almost sounds like we're penalizing the honest, rehabilitated, you know, person who admits and discloses their criminal history.
Can we look at, maybe bring this back, this aspect of it, bring it back, and then also kind of look at, you know, what the ABC does, and just get some, and bring it, I don't think we're gonna be able to address it tonight.
I would, it would be good to get some feedback from the commission about somebody who has serious criminal background, whether or not they feel that should be to their detriment. In terms of the self-reporting and the honesty, I think our process is saying, it doesn't care. We're gonna do the background check. So, as we know, criminals often lie. So, I think the self-reporting is kinda perplexing to me.
I mean, for me, for this, I would be more comfortable with having, knowing if somebody had convictions. I mean, some, that there's been a length of time. I mean, how lo, I don't know.
I think this is.
I mean, I, you know, if somebody's, if somebody is just coming, completed their sentence, I wouldn't feel necessarily comfortable with that, but I wouldn't bar somebody from some of these if they've had a period of time where they haven't had any issues. That's my feeling on it.
Okay. Well, my experience, 39 years in legal practice, I've known lots of people who you don't think are criminals and turn out to be. I've known some outright criminals. I haven't, I don't do criminal law. But there's one thing that I think we should do here, is that if, in the state questionnaire, someone said they didn't commit, or didn't indicate they committed anything, and in our background check, we find out something else, that should be kind of a no. Okay? Because then they're currently lying. At least we can do that. Because I've known people who have served time in jail, and have gotten out, and have, you know, made wonderful citizens, kids, businesses, everything. And I've known others who, as soon as they get out, they murder someone, or commit another crime, or do more fraud, doesn't matter what the crime is. Criminals generally have a very psych, very mixed-up psychology. Some can be rehabilitated, some never can be. And there's no, it's just like homeless people. You can't categorize them very well. There, some can work, some are drug addicts, some cannot work because they don't want to. I mean, it's, it's really difficult.
So, can you bring that back? Thank you.
I had one last point, actually, on this. Two last points. Signage. I, I would like to not have the standard signage ability for these businesses, and I know that's a little onerous. I would like to have signs that are a little smaller, I suggest, a little less obtrusive. I'm sorry, I just spent a week near Sunset Boulevard, and you just would not believe the signage in West Hollywood. It's, it's huge, and it's Vegas-like, Las Vegas-like. So, I think, I would like to see signage, some other permutation of that, smaller signage, perhaps. Kinda like they have, you know, the real estate signs in some other local towns here are smaller than, than general.
So, we just, but on that, we just talked about signage in seventeen, and, and kind of, it wasn't an issue. We addressed signage as.
I'm waiting till now to bring it up, because it's, it's a big deal here. Records, I don't understand that part. I think we should make sure they comply with all state record-keeping. I don't know what they do with, I mean, don't they take ID from people who walk in to make sure they're 21? What do they do with that information? We need to know. You know, consumption, consumed on the premises, should not be consumed on the premises and parking areas with delivery vehicle. Isn't there something about a state law that says that cigarettes can't be smoked within 20 feet of a retail business? Isn't there a state law that says that? Yeah.
That in our code?
Right. So, I think we don't wanna carry that through as an additional requirement, because this is a little vague under five here.
Our smoking ordinance includes marijuana cannabis.
It does include, okay, great, great, because it's just not presented here.
But if I may, the state, the state law does allow a local jurisdiction to authorize consumption on the premises of a retailer. So, I think we do wanna be clear whether onsite smoking or consumption would be allowed or not. And this would set up the rule that it is not.
Right. I mean, wouldn't, aren't those, though, kind of micro-businesses with sort of little bars or something?
No, this, I mean, retailers, there's a provision in state law that allows cannabis retailers and the micro-businesses that offer retail to potentially allow onsite consumption if the local jurisdiction allows it. So, this would be a provision saying it is not allowed.
Okay. Thank you. That's, that's good to know. And then, under number nine, on the same page, state license application, within seven days of the application being submitted, under number nine, just a statement of, you know, what, that is seven days of, seven days, it just says seven days of when, is the question. So, of application submittal? And then, I guess it's kind of understood on number 10, two, I, I, there, that inspections won't be conducted more every six months unless there's public complaints, right? If there's public complaints, then we will inspect with, regarding those complaints, I'm assuming. I hope.
Correct.
And then, under five, fifty-six, one hundred, C, there's another, there's one of those periods where we're not quite telling them. It's, it's just, we need to tell them. So, the applicant, applications for renewal shall be made at least 60 days before the expiration of the date, and the permit to be accompanied by a non-refundable application fee. Applications for renewal shall be acted upon by the town manager. Applications for renewal made, doesn't say by when, if we're going to do it? And that the town manager needs to know, notify them, so that they would know.
Clarification. If I, if the town manager doesn't notify them, does that mean the 60 days doesn't start?
Right. That's the question.
I, I think, I think as a matter of practice, not that this is gonna be an issue, I think they should just know, and there shouldn't be a noticing requirement. It's hard enough for us just to track and send notices to people.
It's similar to the thought of, of when an application for a building project is deemed complete. Okay. That's, that was just a question also.
As long as Linda's able to do it.
Are you saying that what's not in there is how, how much, within what period of time would the town manager act on that request? Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
That it doesn't state that?
Right. It doesn't say, you know, by when we need to act on it. Is that a problem? That's the question, really. Or are.
Would that be that, you know, in general, it seems to me, if an application for renewal is submitted, and it takes longer for the town to act on it, doesn't the old permit kind of continue in effect pending the town action on the renewal request, or? I mean, I would suggest that we would wanna include a provision that wouldn't sort of mess up the applicant's rights because the town took longer to act on the application, if they had acted in a timely manner.
I agree.
Right. Exactly. That's, that's a good point. Just one other thing, five, fifty-six, one, two, oh, permit shall expire. This active use thing is an issue. What if some, what if a business takes a vacation for six months, or there just are no sales? I mean, what if people are just buying not in Fairfax for some reason, but the business is still trying? So, I think we need a better definition of what active is, and I'm kind of, I know that's already been hashed out, but I'm just getting to it now, sorry. And then, on appeals, you know, within, five, fifty-six, one, four, oh, within 15 days of the date of service, maybe the date of mailing, instead of the date of service of a decision, because service is so, is defined in legal terms, and so, it's kind of hard to know what service.
So, would you be okay with them just defining what that meant? Can you hear?
Normal, I'm, I thought I had put in a service provision. Maybe it wasn't, sometimes I draft it as a standalone, this is how you do service, but I thought there was. But I will double-check that we define how service dates are calculated.
Okay, great. And then, under notice of appeal, since this is appeal coming to town council instead of an appeals court, even in appeals court, we're limited to the number of pages. I'm suggesting, can we limit these appeals to a number of pages, like 25 pages, 12-point type, that type, double-spaced? I don't know if you wanna even bother with those specs, or less. And then, under E, in the event a notice of appeal is timely filed, the non-renewal suspension, or, suspension or revocation is, maybe we say, stayed pending final question by the town council, instead of not effective, revocation is not stayed? I don't know. Just a word-of-art-language issue, really, not, not substantive so much. Under one, let's see, is this one forty-eight, G? What was this issue? No, never mind. Under H, I would add the word irrelevant, immaterial, collateral, and repetitious. And then, under I, another kind of by when. After the conclusion of the appeal hearing, the town shall determine if any ground, by when will the town determine that? Is there, is there a limit to that? Should there be? And then, I would kind of break it out, just for clarity. And if this is with the ordinance, and I was having to interpret it or read it, I would want, at the second sentence, to be kind of A in parentheses, if the town council determines, and then B in parentheses, if the town council determines again. So, I think that would be nice to make those, break those out a little bit.
And then, after B, the decision of the town council should be final, would be its own, back at the margin again?
Right. Exactly. And then, last but not least, five, fifty-six, one, six, oh, so, one, five, zero, E, I always do this, but it's, so, at the end of E, create causes of action, including but not limited to injunction, injunctive relief. Why, why, by limited, that's all. This is how I write contracts. Application of this article, you know, I'm not quite sure what the last part of that says. However, if such medical marijuana dispensary has received a permit to the end of five, fifty-six, oh, seven, oh, not quite, what does that say there?
So, the way I was looking at this, is it was basically saying, if by the time this ordinance is enacted, the existing medical cannabis retailer has obtained the necessary state permits that will allow them to engage in adult use, then they're basically grandfathered in and don't have to go through this process. But if these regulations go into effect before they have that state permit, then they are gonna be subject, along with everybody else, to apply and go through the process. Is that right?
Yes. And by our calculations, the earliest that this could take effect would be the end of July, insofar as we've received testimony that they're already making the applications at the state, and will be submitting their application to the town shortly. And Garrett, Garrett has been in discussions with the state. We consider the Marin Alliance pretty much a baseline business. The, the likelihood that this would even become an issue is very remote.
Well, if you wanna talk about that, I, I think that's appropriate. I think if they haven't managed to get their adult-use delivery license from the state, by the time this ordinance gets enacted, considering that the town council jumped through a lot of hoops to make that available to them before the end of last year, I say, yeah, put them in the hopper with everybody else and have them compete. I don't understand why the problem would be with that.
Anything else, Phil?
On this? No, I'm, I'm good. I mean, I, I had some other clarification ideas. One, fifty-six, one, sixty, you know, comply with, at the end of it, with, with provisions of this Article One, including buffer zones and setbacks. But I think that's kind of without saying, that just applies anyway. So, I don't think that's necessary to add that language.
Okay.
And that's it for that, yes.
All right. Michelle?
Okay. So, I was interested in limiting, limiting the THC, as well as no children's flavors, packaging, or marketing. So, I don't know if that should be going under five-point-five, six-point-oh-two-oh, under definitions, or some other section. I'll leave that up to the author to do. I was having a bit of a, phew. On section five-point-five-six-point-oh-seven-oh, the review of the application, and the action on those applications, I, I guess I do feel like this is a land use entitlement, but I know we're trying not to do that. So, I'm, I, what I was trying to do is, I see two pathways, you know, for this, or that it's, that if we can come up with standards of operation, that it should be a simple checklist at the staff level, and the planning commission could easily be. checklist at the staff level and the planning commission could easily be the deciding body with the city council as the appealable body. So that's how I would write this versus having them go to staff, the planning commission, then the city council was how I was seeing it. I'm glad we're going to be relooking at 5.56.080. I won't comment on that more, I'll wait until that comes back. I'm glad you've all brought up that before. Under the subsection for 5.56.090, D1, I think we should define under item two vicinity, whether that's 50 feet or whatever our smoking, our sign, signage requirement is on smoking, maybe insert that. Under item three, not obstruct the entrance, maybe we say 25% of the window cannot be covered, you know, more than 25% or be, be concrete. I don't, I don't know what those vicinity or shall not obstruct mean unless we're clear. Similar on the next page, item four, third line, property lines versus property boundaries, I don't know, it's a small distinction. On item five, I don't know if consumption would mean smoking as well. I think of consumption as eating, so I don't know, I, I would think consuming and eating and smoking, so I'd like to see that. I actually, so the state, I think, is an annual renewal, is that right? I, I really felt like the one, the 12 months just seemed really short to me. I think if somebody was doing a TI on a property and then had to go through these permitting requirements with the state and then all these costs of, you know, getting employees, buying your product, you get, you're buying your delivery cars and then you're renewing again. I don't know. For me, I was looking at two years is where I was, I was going. Under 5.56.120, not an active use, so yeah, I'm in agreement if we can define that. Similarly, under 5.56.130, second line, I don't know what projects are, so I would delete projects. I think if it's, it's non-transferable to persons or locations is fine. I don't, I don't think, I don't know what product, projects are. I am concerned for 5.56.160, you know, we heard from Marin Alliance tonight that they've been waiting now for two months and they, they haven't gotten their permit yet. It's no fault of theirs according to them, the state's really taking a long time, they haven't figured out their own things. So it'd be terrible if this thing became in effect and then they didn't, they didn't get it. So I don't know, I just like some, some thinking on, on that. That was all I had. And, and I thought, I, I, boy, I really thought staff, this, this draft was really great. So thank you for really putting together an ordinance. This is what I've been dying to see. Thank you.
Can I ask, before Mimi goes, can I ask a question of staff? What is our normal length of business licenses in town? So our normal business licenses are annual. Got it?
Annual and it's prorated and a.
Right, right. Got it.
You know, but, but clarifying, you know, business license is a tax, so it's a fee. So they're coming in and paying a fee. This is really a land use application that we're jamming into a business license process and so they're going to have to annually provide a whole, like you're doing a conditional use permit application every year because they're going to be doing all that background stuff again and they're going to be checking whether new school uses have opened up and, I mean, they're going to do the whole checklist again.
Can you clarify that? Because I see this kind of no different, if we're treating this like any other business in town and every other business has an annual business license, can you address how you foresee this different on an annual basis once a business is up and running? Staff?
We wouldn't be, the buffers only apply when the initial application, we only look at businesses that are established at the time the business is established, that's drafted into the zoning ordinance and that's consistent with state law. And actually kind of, I think it's consistent with just how normal land use regulations work. You look at things at the time the use is established, you don't look at necessarily what use has come in, you know, because it's the concept of coming to the nuisance afterwards. You don't penalize a business that's established just because someone decided to move in next door. So then in terms of how renewals would go, I think it, what we were thinking is it would be more of a, just make sure they've been in compliance over the last year, make sure that all the regulations in chapter 5.56 have been complied with, but not necessarily rehashing everything from the zoning standards.
And the, the main thing is renewal of the state license. Oh, sorry. The main thing that we're looking for, if they have a renewal of their state license because they have to renew that every year. And the reality is in terms of compliance, that would be a different issue because we would have to bring a firm in most likely if we were actually to do whatever they do.
Okay, so some of the issues that I'm interested in pursuing are focused on the anti-franchise ordinance basically and our ability to limit products by requiring organic, no pesticide use, for example. Some of these limitations that I'm more interested in, I mean, I think that there are standards for ensuring that mold is not present on the products, but I'm wondering if we can impose additional organic standards to help limit our, you know, supporting sort of the environmental degradation we heard some of the public commentators talk about. And then I'm also interested in the extent to which we can limit, you know, Philip Morris and the big, big guys from coming in and both with respect to obtaining business licenses and with respect to products.
In terms of the organic, that could be part of the scoring criteria where we would look at, you know, locally sourced, organic materials, if they could provide evidence to that with their, with their operate, or their business plan. So to the extent they could demonstrate that, that would be extra points that they would get.
Well, local is going to be difficult, right? Because like Marin doesn't allow a lot of this manufacturing type, but I'm much more interested in the nature of the product as opposed to where it's coming from. So organic, non-pesticide, grown products, sustainably grown, yeah, sure. I mean, let's, let's think in those lines and let's think in terms of trying to keep out the big tobacco companies if we can.
So some of those things may be considerations for the scoring, you know, and we've talked previously on the scoring about, you know, and we had that with medical dispensary where we gave more points, if you will, to a local applicant. So some of those things can be, I think, addressed there.
Yeah, and I'd also like to include preferences for minority owned, women owned, small businesses.
One of the public handed out this thing and I'm wondering whether we could just, I probably can't, we probably can't answer this now, but is there, is there a chemical called meta, metamidophos? And, I don't know, I've never heard of it. And I've done environmental law too, it's not, not on my list, but is it, is this thing real or does it exist? On the, there's a huge state regulatory list of chemicals that they're testing for. I'm wondering if that's actually on that list because that's not part of this presentation that was handed out. Just a question if anybody knows. Don't have to answer it now, just wondering.
We'll, we'll look over the materials provided.
You know, so that, so that leads to exactly what Mimi is saying. We don't, we want organic, we want, you know, we want no candy, we want no flavorings and I would like to limit the THC. I don't know.
Don't put words in my mouth there.
I'm, I'm not, I'm just adding to it.
So, Mimi, did you have more?
Yep.
How did I guess that?
I don't know, you're, you're smart. So in terms of the phases and, and the application process and, you know, Michelle talked a little bit about it being, you know, it's sounding like a use permit where it comes to the planning commission and then appeal to the town council. I frankly would prefer to see this stay more ministerial. I don't necessarily want to see it and I think if we can craft the, craft the criteria tight enough, that might be doable. I mean, that's my hope. We talked about the pre-screening decisions potentially being appealable as opposed to not appealable and again, I would definitely like to make sure we have a, a hook to ensure that during the pre-screening process, if there's some sort of error or glitch or computer malfunction or something was not appropriately considered, that people can go back and reconsider it. On the signage, I am in favor of keeping signage requirements for cannabis related businesses the same as signage requirements for other types of businesses and not singling cannabis businesses out for special requirements. As far as records are concerned, I am opposed to requiring them keeping records of their customers. As far as consumption is concerned, I'm opposed to prohibiting it in the retail establishments and I would include smoking and edibles. I agree with the, the 10, on, gosh, which number is this with all these ones? This is 090, 10-2, that there has to be an exception for if we receive complaints to be able to inspect more frequently. I also agree with Commissioner Rodriguez that the term should be, well, let me think about that. I keep wanting, I think if this is ministerial and we are limiting renewals to, as Garrett talked about, maybe the annual one would be fine. Most of the other comments that the commissioners made, I was in agreement with. And I, on, unlike the other commissioners who have spoken on 556-160, I am in favor of the language as it's written.
Norma, you have any comments?
I have nothing to add.
Okay, I've got a couple. I agree with Mimi and we went through this on Title 17 where we talked about the signage and within that title, the signage was the same as for other businesses, so I concur with that. I think we should leave it as part of the, the normal sign, permit, sign code. Consumption on premises, I like the language as it is written, so for now, no consumption on premises. Again, that can always change down the road, but right now I have more of a comfort with keeping that out at this point. As far as limitations on products, you know, with the timeframes that we have and the study and the work that would take, I see that as something perhaps the council may have interest in down the road or when they get into this process. And I think for us to, to start that with a business permit or start that whole effort right now would mean that we wouldn't be able to get this to the council in, in time. And I just assume have the council address their needs and concerns with product limitation. I'm sure they'll, they'll speak to that when they get this or in the future. And I think that's all I had. You guys have enough?
One of the things that we're, I'm, I'm still not clear on because I've heard a variety of positions expressed, has to do with who reviews and I've heard one that says, hey, keep it ministerial with town manager. Another one says, planning commission makes the decision with an appeal to the town council. What we're proposing is that the planning commission would be doing the scoring to basically set who qualifies to go to the town council for their final decision. So I, I think, I haven't really heard from three of the commissioners in terms of our suggested process versus.
I'm fine with it as it is. I think in that language, it talks about some of those could be combined meetings where it says maybe have the same meeting where the council and the planning commission look at things or things are looked at in the same way. I'll have, I'll go back and look at that. Somebody else?
Well, this is, this is a question. I thought we were going to be presented tonight with some of these scoring criteria, but we weren't.
Right, the, the, that's just a general concept and I want to clarify that the planning commission would be ranking because they would be doing scoring, so.
We, we're, I'm fine with that idea, but we haven't seen the criteria you're, you're looking at.
Yeah, which we'll bring back to you at the next, or we'll bring to you at the next meeting, but the question would be this notion that the town council, that it would be through the planning commission for all the applications to the town council for the decision.
Yeah, I mean, my thoughts on this, the public is very concerned and they might want, the public might want, I'm, I'm absolutely aligned with the idea of a ministerial permit. I'm generally aligned with that idea for most, a lot of planning things. You shouldn't have to, you know, get a permit to paint your house, stuff like that. And some of these things that we, you know, we've gotten into sheds and things, I mean, it's, it's, it's a little too much. Some of that stuff should be made ministerial. This one could be made ministerial, I'm fine with that, but if it, if it doesn't get that way, I'm okay with having the planning commission be the scoring entity as long, and then it goes to the town council, so there's another hearing. So, you know, that's pretty good public coverage.
So where I was getting at that, the combined meeting is phase two, the application scoring. It says a public hearing on a commercial cannabis business permit application may be consolidated with other required hearings for design review, traffic input, traffic impact permit and/or sign permits. So that's where I was getting, where it seemed to be the possibility of combining things versus that stepped process.
I think what we're trying to convey there is not combining the meetings or combining the bodies, but combining those topics into one application type of package so that people won't have to come and get a separate sign permit and people won't have to come and get a separate this permit or that permit or whatever permit, that it would be one package of all of their required approvals.
Yeah, they would be review, you would be reviewing the different applications concurrently, but it would be advisory because.
Right.
That would be, provided that they score high enough to achieve the minimum threshold, that they, that would all be recommendations to the town council.
Okay, I wasn't sure that read that way to me, so I'll go back and relook at it and ask questions on that if, if I still have them. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No. Norma's fine.
I'm fine.
She's fine.
I'm fine.
Okay, so I think we're done with that. Not bad. So we did minutes. Do you want to, do Planning Directors' report, or do you want?
Maybe there's a
Go ahead.
Is, we could take this back to your commission at your regular meeting. Now, the question is, Commissioner Green, did you imply that you might not be at that April 18th meeting?
Yeah, I hate to say it, but there's a 50/50 chance I won't be at that meeting. Next, that's next week, right?
First he couldn't.
Yeah, not next week's meeting.
April 18, yeah, I should be here for April.
Let me ask a question, though, of staff. If we
It's next week that I
If we address this at the April regular meeting on the 18th, is that enough time to turn this around for the council's May first meeting?
Yes, our intention, if we brought it, well, when we bring it back, will be to have these ordinances in a form that we would be recommending for action by the planning commission, you know, resolution recommending adoption by the town council.
No, but the town council meeting is an introduction. It's just a discussion.
Right.
Right, but she didn't test what she's asking.
Yes, we would have time, because the town council would simply be discussing this at their May meeting, so we would have enough time.
So perhaps what I would recommend is that you poll all of the commissioners to see if we're going to have six people at the regular meeting, and if not, if there are some conflicts, then I would suggest we have a special meeting to do it, so that we make sure we get it done in time.
We will do so.
Through the chair. I, I can't make the 18th. I could do a special meeting the 11th, but I'm out of town until May 5.
I'm anticipating being unavailable until April 15.
When are you out of town?
Midnight on the 18th, so I'm not going to spend my time at a meeting.
Why?
Okay, we will
So can you go ahead and poll us with some of those that you've taken?
Yes, we will. I'll probably doodle poll you with some options for
It sounds like we may need a special meeting.
Maybe not, depending on Commissioner Gonzalez, but
I would rather go with as many as we could
Go five.
Yeah.
Get here.
Okay.
You need five yay votes, so, so if we're done with that, do you want to do a Planning Directors' report, or do you want to postpone that? I mean, up to you.
Well, is there a meeting, is there a meeting on March next week, right?
Yes.
So I'm 50/50, not going to be here for that, but I should be here for April 18.
Can you tell us what is on the agenda for March 22?
We have two houses, one of which is a continuance, and two other items which are more minor in nature. Well, one is the continued split rock application, and one is a smaller application.
So if I could not be here, it wouldn't ruin the evening?
Are we talking, did you say April or March?
She's talking next week.
Yeah.
Oh, no, you're talking April. She's talking next week.
Yeah, so
I don't know.
We simply need a majority of the commission to take action on those applications.
So can you send out and ask for next week as well, whether we're going to have?
Okay, with the exception of Commissioner Green, who's 50/50, how is the rest of the commission right now?
For next week.
Next week, she's
She's going to be here. Oh, my God, I'm so confused. I thought she just said she could
Okay, we'll poll. The only other item I wanted to bring to the commission's attention is the Form 700s. Those are due to the state by April 1. Thereafter, they can fine you $10 a day. They, some people have already completed them. Congratulations and thank you. But it's just one of those, it's super simple if your only economic interest is your house in town, but it's just one of those duties you have to do as a public official, so please don't forget.
If they have questions, call them.
And if you have any questions about how to fill it out, please contact Michelle Gardner, the town clerk.
Is that it for your comments? Any commissioner comments and requests?
At our last meeting, there was a request that the planning commission review the fence ordinance, and I was wondering if staff planned to bring that back to us in the next couple of months?
So I had asked that same question, that at our next regular meeting, that staff kind of answer the question in there, so they got it.
Next week.
Next week.
Keeping in mind our staff
I'll include that in Directors'
We've got a work plan.
Report.
Whether it's consistent with our work plan to take it up, because we've already approved a work plan for the planning commission.
Well, this was only to answer the questions the member of the public had concerning fences, so a little bit different.
It's all because of the one
Anything else for any, any other commissioner comments or questions?
I just wanted to tell people that Marin Municipal Water District has an annual, it's an eco-friendly garden tour, and it's scheduled for Saturday, May 4, from 10 to 4, and it's free, and it's really cool, because you get to go through different people's gardens that are native, low-water-use gardens, and it's a great time, because they're all in bloom.
What's the date? I don't know.
Thank you. Anything else? Do I have a motion for adjournment?
I move that we adjourn.
How about a 16-hour day?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you again, legal counsel, for providing this incredible memo at the end of this thing and culling together those definitions from all over the world. It's terrific.